Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the San Bruno City Council meeting of January the 11th, 2022. Calling the meeting to order at 7:00. If we may please have roll call.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mason?
Here.
Mayor Rico Matino?
Here. Thank you. If I may ask our Vice Mayor, she's able to lead us in the pledge this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor, I appreciate it. Now we'll move on to item number four. Public comments for not on the agenda. Individuals will be allowed up to three minutes. It is council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matters not agendized pursuant to state law. If there are any folks in the public who wishes to speak, now would be the time to please reach your hand for items not on the agenda. And then I would ask our city clerk if we could bring in the folks as they come in, please.
Yes, Jeremy Sacknacki?
Hello, council. I wish you a very happy New Year's. Let me begin by saying that I am indeed running for San Bruno City Council in this next election cycle. And before I can focus on what policy agenda I would like to dedicate myself to for these next 12 months, I would like to talk about the districting process that is taking place currently. I did attend the public workshop in November, and I find it strange that the city has really not made the effort that I think it should to really educate the public about this ongoing process because as I have walked some of the streets in my neighborhood, Rollingwood, I found that very few, close to nobody, actually knew that this process is taking place. And I believe it was made a point that community engagement and the community's knowledge of this process was required by state law. Furthermore, I am overlooking the deadline for submitted maps, and I've found that they were changed from one week to two weeks prior of the public hearings that were going to be held to review them. So I find that a little odd, and if you could explain that, that would be great. And the last thing is generally, over these next 12 months, I am going to be a regular participant in every city council meeting for I feel like my voice is valuable. I have a perspective I can share, and I would like to again commit myself to the mission of making global issues local, whether that be global pandemics, whether that be climate change, et cetera. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments, and happy new year to you as well.
Next, we have Paul Wapinski. Just one moment while I bring Paul in.
Good evening. I'd like to bring to the council's attention the poor conditions of a large number of areas of our main arteries in the city, specifically Crystal Springs Road, San Bruno Avenue, and Sneath Lane, especially at the intersection of San Bruno all the way down to the post office. I mean, the roads are just falling apart. I know we have a plan to pave in San Bruno. I looked on the website and I couldn't find it. I'd like to bring the council to do something specific with these areas because people drive those more than a lot of the other areas that are main arteries. And it's really bad on people's cars. And if we want people to come and spend money in San Bruno, we ought to be able to drive to and from shops in a nice, smooth manner. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
I see no other speakers.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to item number five, announcements and presentations. And the first presentation that we will have is to receive a presentation annual report from the Planning Commission. My understanding is we're going to bring in Rick Bisari, who is the chair in 2021, for this report.
Okay. Very good. And thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the San Bruno City Council meeting of January the 11th, 2022. Calling the meeting to order at 7:00. We may please have roll call.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Medina?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Mason? Mayor Rico Matino?
Here, thank you. If I may ask our Vice Mayor, she's able to lead us in the pledge this evening?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Vice Mayor, I appreciate it. Now we'll move on to item number four. Public comments for not on the agenda. Individuals will be allowed up to three minutes. It is council's policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matters not agendized pursuant to state law. If there are any folks in the public who wishes to speak, now would be the time to please raise your hand for items not on the agenda. And then I would ask our city clerk if we could bring in the folks as they come in, please.
Yes, Jeremy Sacknacki?
Hello, council. I wish you a very happy New Year's. Let me begin by saying that I am indeed running for San Bruno City Council in this next election cycle. And before I can focus on what policy agenda I would like to dedicate myself to for these next 12 months, I would like to talk about the districting process that is taking place currently. I did attend the public workshop in November and I find it strange that this city hasn't really not made the effort that I think it should to really educate the public about this ongoing process. Because as I have walked some of the streets in my neighborhood, Rollingwood, I found that very few, close to nobody, actually knew that this process is taking place. And I believe it was made a point that community engagement and the community's knowledge of this process was required by state law. Furthermore, I am overlooking the deadline for submitted maps and I've found that they were changed from one week to two weeks prior of the public hearings that were going to be held to review them. So I find that a little odd and if you could explain that, that would be great. And the last thing is generally, over these next 12 months, I am going to be a regular participant in every city council meeting for I feel like my voice is valuable. I have a perspective I can share and I would like to again commit myself to the mission of making global issues local, whether that be global pandemics, whether that be climate change, et cetera. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments and happy new year to you as well. Next speaker, please.
Next, we have Paul Wapinski. Just one moment while I bring Paul in.
Good evening. I'd like to bring to the council's attention the poor conditions of a large number of areas of our main arteries in the city, specifically Crystal Springs Road, San Bruno Avenue, and Sneat Lane, especially at the intersection of San Bruno, all the way down to the post office. I mean, the roads are just falling apart. I know we have a plan to pave in San Bruno. I looked on the website and I couldn't find it. I'd like to bring the, I'd like the council to do something specific with these areas because people drive those more than a lot of the other areas that are main arteries and it's really bad on people's cars. And you know, if we want people to come and spend money in San Bruno, we ought to be able to drive to and from shops in a nice, smooth manner. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
I see no other speakers.
Okay, thank you very much. Now we'll move on to item number five, announcements and presentations. And the first presentation that we will have is to receive a presentation annual report from the planning commission. My understanding is we're going to bring in Rick Bisotti, who is the chair in 2021, for this report.
Okay. Very good. And thank you everyone for having me. I've done a bunch of Zoom meetings, but I've not done a presentation on a Zoom meeting, so please excuse any shortcomings. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Rick Bisotti and I've served as the planning commission chair from January to December 2021. I have been asked by the current chair, Arro Harmon, to make tonight's presentation. Next slide, please. Tonight's agenda will begin with the 2021 Planning Commission composition, followed by the introduction of planning staff. Then I will go through the significant accomplishments that the planning commission has reviewed and considered in 2021 and conclude my presentation with projects that are currently in progress and on the commission's 2022 public. Next slide, please. The 2021 Planning Commission roster included myself as the chair, Commissioners Arros Harmon as vice chair, Commissioners Mary Lou Johnson, Commissioner Gerald Madden, Commissioner Val Morgan, and Commissioner Kelly Lethen, and our newest member Marco De Rosa, who joined in July of 2021. Next slide, please. Our planning commission staff consists of Pamela Lu, Community and Economic Development Director, Michael Loughlin, Planning and Housing Manager, and he serves as our Planning Commission Secretary, Michael Smith, Senior Planner, Matt Newbaum, Associate Planner, Brandon Woodworth, Assistant Planner, and Eliseo Amaya, CED, in return. Next slide, please. And I hope I didn't butcher anyone's name. Okay. The planning commission is a separate member quasi-yushiri body that provides input and advises to the city council. The commission administers the zoning and subdivision ordinances in conjunction with general plan in reviewing and approving private development applications. The commission encourages the public to participate in all land use policies pertinent to the physical growth of San Bruno. Three members of the planning commission also serve as the architectural review committee and the planning commission meets mostly on the third Tuesday of each month. Next slide, please. The three members of the planning commission also voluntarily serve on the architectural review committee each month to review and make recommendations on development projects and applications. The architectural review committee normally meets on the Thursday before the planning commission meeting. They review projects requiring architectural review and making recommendations on development projects or applications to the planning commission. Next slide, please. Okay, highlights for 2021. In February 2021, the planning commission reviewed the second phase of the zoning code update that brought the city zoning district within the TCP area into compliance with this specific plan. The zoning code amendment implemented mixed-use zoning along El Camino and other TCP-specific zoning districts in the transit corridors playing area. It included updates to comply with the current state law with respect to density bonus and accessory dwelling units. The planning commission reviewed forwarded favorable recommendations to the city council. The zoning code amendment became effective April 2021. And October, the planning commission reviewed the recent housing changes, housing law changes. In November, the commission reviewed the proposed amendment to the temporary use permit ordinance relating to construction staging. The planning commission will hear this item again in their January meeting. Next slide, please. Another significant highlight for the planning commission was to receive the draft EIR public comments for the Bay Hill specific plan and Phase One work in February 2021. The favorable recommendation was forwarded to the city council in August and the city council carried out the final adoption of Bay Hill specific plan and the approval of the U2 Phase One development. Next slide, please. In May, the planning commission approved a new 28-room hotel at 160 El Camino in May of, yeah, May 2021, and a 23-unit townhome development at 271 El Camino Real in September. The commission also reviewed and approved nine single-family residential conditional use permits and architectural review projects. Next slide, please. And our outlook for 2022. The planning commission is scheduled to review 29 single-family residential development projects or residential development on Glenview Terrace in early 2022. Next slide, please. And lastly, several other entitlement projects have recently begun their preliminary review with planning office, including the former Crossing Hotel site, the vacant site at 170 San Bruno Avenue, and the former Engle School site. And with me tonight is the Economic Development, Community and Economic Development Director, who can provide information on these projects if the council is interested. Next slide, please. After a housing study session with the city council in January 2022, the planning commission will be reviewing the draft housing element and recommended housing site list in 2022. Next slide. The council will be holding a study session in early 2022 regarding cannabis sales and the planning commission will consider the information provided by staff on council recommendations. The city council will be holding a study session in early 2022 regarding the climate action plan and the planning commission will consider any follow-up items recommended by the council. The planning commission is also scheduled to review an update to the zoning code later in the year focused on single-family residential development. And finally, the commission is scheduled to review and forward recommendations to city council on adjustments to the short-term rental ordinance to simplify the permitting process. Next slide, please. Thank you for your time this evening and if there are any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer those. We're staffed with us as well. And thank you to the council and the mayor for allowing me to serve on the commission yet again this year. It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report. Thank you to all the commissioners and thank you for being the chair last year and facilitating the presentation this evening. You made mention that we have a staff member here who could give maybe a very brief update on the 170 San Bruno Avenue and a couple other items that were listed, Engle School site. Is that possible?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. I'm sorry, I was in the middle of being brought in into the room. Can you repeat your question one more time?
Not a problem. Director Lu, there was a slide that showed through locations. One was 170 San Bruno Avenue, one was the, was going to be at one point a hotel site and then the other one was the Engle School site. And just very, very briefly, maybe to where that is in that process.
Understood. So with regard to the 170 San Bruno, because this is one of the TCP project, we have just received preliminary plans and a proposal for a pre-application. So staff's currently reviewing it. Currently, it's probably going to take about two, three months for a preliminary application review to be brought to the architectural review committee for further feedback. So I would say in about March or so, the architectural review committee will have something on their plate to review. In regard to the 160 El Camino Hotel, unfortunately, ever since the project has been entitled, we have not heard back on the developer and there's no building permit submitted. So as is right now, the project's entitled, but there's no building permit or construction schedule proposed. In terms of the last project, the Engle Pulte design, we have been in rounds and rounds discussion with the Pulte developer. One of the planning consultants at the city company is the lead on this project. They are almost wrapping up their initial design, which we might be starting the environmental work in the next couple of months.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Are there questions from colleagues on the presentation before I open it to the, if there was any public comments? Why don't we go move, Councilmember Medina?
Yes, good evening and thank you for that report. I just wanted a clarifying question for 170 San Bruno Avenue. Is that commercial or residential?
The plan that we have received right now is purely residential. It's a 50-unit condo residential development.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other hands. If there's any members of the public who wish to have any comments in regards to the presentation that we just received, you could please raise your hand now and the city clerk will bring you into the room. Seeing none, back to council and on behalf of all of us and a couple of the members here have served, so they know firsthand. Thank you for the effort, the work. You at times have as many meetings as we do. So we appreciate very much. And once again, if you could please pass on our thanks to the commission. And have a good evening and the rest of your night. Now we'll move on to the next item under presentations and that is receive a presentation on the new city website. And we have an IT console and we will bring Jeff in and be happy to turn the meeting over to you, please.
Good afternoon, members of council. Thank you for your time this evening. I'd like to share my screen with you here. Just one moment. There never seems to be enough real estate on the screen. Team Mayor, honorable members of council, thank you very much for your time this evening. My name is Jeff Gershannick and I am a special assistant in the Information Technology Division. I am very pleased this evening to present the hard work of the Project Aurora team on bringing the city's new website to fruition. Tonight's presentation is to give you an update on the city's new website and where we are with it currently. I want to give you a little background on the project, a little functionality overview for the website, the next steps we expect to take with the website, and then open the floor to any questions. In addition to the other council priorities, focus areas, and strategic initiatives, the website had been mentioned by you as an area that you'd like to have addressed and has been worked on this fiscal year and is perhaps one of the more significant independent projects that we've accomplished. The project team considered multiple options when we were looking at new platforms for the website and decided on Civic Plus as it was the best fit for the city. The project began with the team looking at a mood board that had been designed by Civic Plus, which echoed the colors and look and feel of the city's logo and that would be echoed in the new website. The team then moved on to a layout design, which included a large graphic in the center, graphic links immediately underneath, which would take you to key areas of the website, news flashes, which would show areas of interest and the city's calendar. To take you through the website now from that layout, as you can see, we're using what's known as a mega menu, which presents a variety of options in a large dropdown fashion. The project team spent considerable amount of time designing those top-level navigation elements. As you can see, there are six of them and within each of those, there are multiple categories that allow a resident or a business who are visiting our website to select from them. And we have tried to break those down into logical areas that show each of the functionality and finding the best way to present all of that information to a visitor to our website. One of the advantages of the Civic Plus platform is it allows visitors to our website to establish an account, which allows the city to communicate with them. I'm going to take you through establishing an account real quickly here. As you can see, it's going to ask you for some basic information, your name, your address, your telephone number, your email address. And another advantage of this will be, we'll see in the forms module a little later on. The site shows the privacy policy and terms and conditions for use of the website and you agree to those terms and conditions. You do need to pass a CAPTCHA. And here I'm trying to pick out the chimneys and I think I'm going to miss one. I sure did. There's another chimney hidden there. And once you do that and hit submit, you'll get an email with the information as to how you can register your account. Let's take a look at what that email looks like. Pretty standard and it asks you to verify your account and click on that. And once you do that, you'll be asked to establish a password. It has the typical requirements for password complexity. We don't want simple passwords and it gives you a moving bar there that shows you whether your password meets some complexity requirements. And you verify that makes certain that you've got that written down so that you don't forget that in the future. After you've established your password, you'll be asked to log in and you'll log in with your email account. And once you've logged in with your email account, you will be presented with the website and you'll see in the upper right-hand corner that I'm now logged in. You can change your account from there and add some information. Basically the same information that we had when we were originally setting up the account. I want to show you one of the more powerful features of the new website. We're going to take a look at the city council agendas here. And this is the agenda center and you'll see in the upper right-hand corner, there is an option for notify me. And if you click on that, you'll be presented with the notify me section, which allows you to subscribe to notifications either by email or via an SMS text message by entering your telephone, cellphone number in there. And you can select an option to be notified anytime information is posted in that section of the website. And you'll get an email that asks you to verify that you'd like to continue to receive those notifications. And by clicking on that, you'll have updated your profile. And now anytime a new city council agenda is posted, you'll receive an email or an SMS message. It goes beyond just the agenda center. There's an alert center that if the city decides to publish an alert to residents, people can subscribe to that, as well as all of the calendars that are available on the website for the particular meeting bodies, as well as city events. And also, if there is a news flash, which is of interest to the community, the resident by signing up via notify me can receive an email that a new piece of information has been posted on the website. And here you see the calendar and the upcoming events. By clicking on the event, you have the details that are associated with the event. You can also select different calendars and view all of those individually or as a group. And finally, you can share that information via a variety of social media functions. And that will provide a link to whomever you're sharing that email with to take them directly to that area of the website. I mentioned a little earlier that there was an advantage to establish an account with the city's Civic Plus website. As with many websites, there is the ability to have a form that can be submitted to the city. And you can see that it's a pretty standard form, asking you for your name and information. And here's another one here for the do not knock registry. Once again, asking for your name and your address. But if you have established an account with the city and you are signed into the city's website, and I'll go ahead and sign in here real fast. You'll see that when you go to fill out those forms, for example, the do not knock, all of your account information is automatically populated into the form and that carries through to the student internet registration form as well over here. Filling in your name, your address. filling in your name, your address, your telephone number, your email address, making it very convenient for people who are using the city's website. I'm about ready to wrap up, but I did want to show you just one more thing. Included on the site is an artificial intelligence chatbot. I call him Bruno, and it allows users to actually enter natural language questions, and it will search the site, the best link, and/or the answer. And here we're searching for who is the mayor. The chatbot actually will get better as people ask him questions. He's only 13 days old so far, so he will continue to improve and provide better answers for our visitors to our website in the future. I want to talk real briefly about next steps. Staff has done some training, and we'll have some more later this month. And over time, we'll be able to build out additional capacity, features, and functionality on the website. So at this point, I would be more than happy to answer any questions that council has about the site.
Thank you very much for the report, and thank you for walking us and everybody at the meeting this evening. Any questions from colleagues? Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I think the presentation looks great. It's a big improvement, and really, we'll do a lot to improve our communication with residents, so hats off to the whole team that worked on it. And I had a question about the Agenda Center. And when we launched it, I started using it actually during this meeting, during these live meetings to go through. And what I noticed tonight was that when I clicked on the links, they just took me to a PDF instead of to a interactive agenda as it had in previous times. Is that a temporary situation, or was that a change that was made?
I believe if you click on the media link, that will take you to the HTML Agenda. Let me see whether I can pull that up there here.
There it is.
Is that what you're looking for?
That's what I was looking for.
All right.
I assumed when I saw media, I assumed that was going to take me to YouTube where we're broadcasting. It's got a little picture of a TV, so.
Yeah, it will, once the meeting is finished and recorded, Melissa and all of her crew will link that through, and you'll see that that same link will take you to the recorded meeting with the HTML Agenda.
Cool. Thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Mason.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank everybody who worked on this because I know it's been it's been a bit of a struggle with the existing or the old website. And I just want to say that it's so nice and easy to maneuver through the site, and I can see a lot of residents hopefully finding what they're looking for right away, so that they don't have to click on a number of different selections to get where they're going. So just a thank you. The work is really appreciated, and hopefully the communication will be easier for our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. If I could have just a moment, Mayor?
Go ahead.
I wanted to talk about the project team very briefly. I've been in the IT business for 30-plus years, and I can say without a doubt the employees on the project team, and they represented every department across the city, so we had plenty of input. We're among the best I've had the opportunity to work for in my entire career. And in addition to doing their typical usual fantastic work for the community in San Bruno, and I obviously don't need to mention during a pandemic, you know, every single individual on this project met every single deadline, provided every single deliverable that was necessary for the project to move forward. And I think it was some pretty spectacular results. And even if that meant attending training the week of Christmas on the 23rd and on the week of New Year's, doing the revisions to the website and the final tune-ups. And you know, I'm being a bit effusive here, but I can't say enough about the employees that you have working for you. You know, typically a project of this scale, something in a nine-to-12-month timeframe, your team accomplished this in five months, in addition to everything else that they've been doing. I have to say, I am honored to have had the opportunity to work with just an incredibly talented group of individuals, and I want to thank them all for all the hard work they've done to make this project a success, because it happened because of that. Thank you. Councilmember Medina.
Yes, I just wanted to echo the compliments. The website is a major improvement. And of course, that comes with technology, and in order to do that, we need to pay for the upgrades. So I think it's money well spent. I would just ask if there is a possibility when our residents are registering for the website, if there could be something pretty easy for them to register for SMC Alert? It seems like you have that audience that's interested, and that data can be populated pretty easily, and it would make it much easier to get more people enrolled into SMC Alert.
It's definitely something that we can look at and do a cross-promotion.
Thank you.
Okay, if we can, I am going to, we have the city manager, and then we will then go to the I'll look for any comments. City Manager.
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Medina. And really briefly, I just want to thank Jeff Gerstman for his leadership on the team and all the kind words about city staff, but really, this project wouldn't have been possible without Jeff and your organized leadership. I just want to thank you. Jeff supported the city at a time where we had a transition in our IT manager position, and he came on board as a consultant to support our IT department, as well as take a leadership role in this project. So Jeff, thank you for everything you've done, and the community of San Bruno will benefit greatly from your work.
Thank you, Javon, very much. At this time, any members of the public that have a question or wish to comment on this presentation? Now would be the opportunity, and I'll ask the city clerk to please bring them in.
Yes, Paul Wepiski.
Good evening again. I've got a question. If I was already on lists, notifications like from the city clerk and stuff, do I have to sign up again? Are those going to go away, or what do I need to do?
So the Civic Plus website is something separate than the notification that you previously received from the city clerk. It's an automated system. So I would encourage you to register with the new city website. Any other members of the public? Not seen any. Again, you heard from colleagues, and thank you very much for your time, your effort, and thank you for walking us through the new website, and we look forward to its use by us as well as the community. So thank you again, and enjoy your evening.
Thank you, Mayor.
Now we will move on to item number six, which is Consent Calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented in earlier council action and are may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested by a council member. Is there any item that colleagues want to pull for a separate vote? Seeing none, are there any items that colleagues want to have a comment or ask a question on? Councilmember Medina.
Yes, on item E as in Edgar and G as in George.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Mason. Any additional items other than E and G?
No, thank you.
Okay. Okay, seeing none others at this time. I'm going to go ahead and bring the first one up, which was E as in Edgar. Adopt resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract amendment with zero turn power washing to provide monthly downtown sidewalk for washing services in the amount not to exceed $28,100. The remainder of year '21-'22 and the increase to the year '21-'22 storm fund budget by $28,100. Councilmember Medina.
Yes, I first wanted to compliment that these power washings are appreciated. I think our downtown is typically cleaner with this amount of attention, and the additional power washings will keep it that way. My question for staff is basically the cost analysis on when it seems like the monthly charge is in the close to $9,000, that could this work be completed by our staff so it stays internal? Just to see what that cost would be. That's primarily my question. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, and let's see if there's any other comments or questions, and then we'll go to staff. Vice Mayor Mason, you indicated you might have, or if that's the same one, same question?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to comment that I think one of the complaints that I've heard early on is just kind of the condition of our downtown, and I feel like it's actually improving already. And I see, you know, there's a street sweeper that I've seen really early in the morning. So I'm just really glad to see the power washers, and I'm hoping that they're going to be able to get into these little crevices where you end up having a lot of, I guess, non aesthetically pleasing things that occur. I don't know how to say it without being too expressive, but there are little like inlays within doors of buildings, and I don't know if that would be considered private or public. I would request that we ask the company who are approving tonight to make sure that they're getting into those crevices. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Other questions or comments at this time? Let's turn to staff. There were two items.
Javon, Roving City Manager. Thank you, Mayor. In regard to Councilmember Medina's question, it looks like we have our Public Works Director, Matt Lee, coming on the screen, and so I'll turn that question over to him. But absolutely, we did look into the option of joining the city staff. And Director Lee, why don't you address the question?
Director Lee.
Good evening, Councilmember Medina and the rest of the city council. My name is Matt Lee. I'm the new Public Works Director for the city of San Bruno. We did take a look at it, but I think one of the challenges that we can have is the staff are already over-resourced for the other maintenance requirements for the streets in Stormtune. And so if we look at it, we would have to probably add additional staff. And if we decided not to add additional staff, I think it would take away from some of their other active duties. But if the analysis is required, we can definitely look at the time that it would take and the materials that would be required to, and cost that out for in-house staff to do.
And I think there was the other question from the Vice Mayor, which is as far as particular areas that may need a little extra TLC, and whether that's private property, public, or is that part of it?
I'm not sure, so I would have to kind of take a look and go back to my team and just make sure I know if it is public or private before I can respond to that. So we'll bring that back to council.
Understood. Thank you. And yes, and I appreciate that you did look into our staff. But I do know if we're doubling the effort, in which it's nice to do, then again, where we take from one, something else isn't getting done. And so I do believe still in the mornings, is it, I think it's termed the little green machine or what goes around to the streets before all the cars usually or vehicles usually arrive on Central. Okay, then I'm going to, and thank you, Director. I'm going to move on to G. Adopt resolution appropriating $72,572 from the general fund, the community services library division budget to restore public hours operation to pre-pandemic levels. Councilmember Medina.
Yes, I know this is also really close to the heart of Vice Mayor Mason, of restoring the library hours and staffing the materials. I wanted to thank staff. I know we're in a surge with Overtron, but being ready for when, hopefully soon, when things get actually closer to normal, that we will be able to increase the hours of service and the material. So thank you.
Vice Mayor Mason.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank definitely the library staff. I think that the library staff is one of the members that we saw through COVID just pivot to wherever the city and the residents needed them. And when I went back to the library, effort reopened, they just expressed how happy they were to be back. And so I just am so thankful. I think that the library is one of the most important treasures that a city can have for many reasons. But seeing that the library is going to soon be reopened is exciting, and I'm hoping that those hours are going to remain in the new budget as well. Thank you.
And also, I would note, we want to thank those folks that volunteer at the library. Some that used to work there, some that have been consistent when they were allowed to come back before it was even open to everyone else, and they helped assist in those times. And they're also intricate and always have been. And yes, I think everyone missed just the interaction, the human contact, and being able to assist people as we always have become accustomed. With that, seeing no other hands, I want to see if there's any members of the public that wish to speak on any of the items that are on consent. Seeing no hands, is there any action from council?
Through the mayor, I'll make a motion to accept the Consent Calendar.
No second.
Motion by Hamilton, second by Mason. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mason.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item seven, Conduct of Business. And I'll ask the clerk to read item A, please.
Item 7A, Approve Letter to Cure Alleged Brown Act Violations Alleged by the San Mateo Union High School District Regarding December 14, 2021 Meeting Agenda Item Related to General Plan Policy OSR-8 Regarding Former Crestmore High School Site at 300 Piedmont Avenue, San Bruno, California.
Before I turn it over to the city attorney, I'm going to call on Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you. So due to the proximity of my home to the Crestmore High School site, I need to recuse from items 7A and 7B. So if the city clerk completes, remove me from the meeting as a panelist. I would appreciate it, and I'll see you guys again at 7C.
Thank you. So at this time, Councilmember Hamilton has recused himself from 7A and 7B. And once we get back to 7C, we will bring him back into the room. City Attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of the city council. Allow me a moment or two to share my screen. Can everybody see that? Excellent.
Yeah.
All right. So as the clerk indicated, we're here this evening on this item to approve a letter to cure an alleged Brown Act violation that was brought to the city's attention by attorneys for the San Mateo Union High School District. So here is just a very brief background. On the 14th of December, the city council adopted a resolution confirming an interpretation, or their interpretation, of the general plan policy OSR-8. And as we know, that policy requires preservation of the fields that are currently occupying about 12 acres of the former Crestmore High School site. Previously, on December 10, staff had informed representatives of the district that the item would be on the December 14 agenda. And then on December 14, staff received a letter from the district's attorneys making various comments about the action and in general objecting to it. It turns out that at that meeting, the attorney for the district and the superintendent did attend the city council meeting, and they were asked to, whether there was any comment, under two separate times, first under public comment before the city council took any action. They did speak at that time, both of them. And then the public was given a second opportunity by the mayor to comment before the city council considered Consent Calendar items, which this item was one of. There were no additional comments. There were no additional comments that members of the public either requested or made before the City Council took action on this particular item. On December 23rd, attorneys for the district said, excuse me, I think it was the 22nd, sent a letter alleging a Brown Act violation and requesting that the city cure that violation per state law within 30 days. And as you're aware, Brown Act does include a provision that allows governing bodies to cure those alleged violations by sending up a letter that is substantially in the form specified in the statute. So the district contended that they had an inadequate opportunity to provide comments on the item for a variety of reasons, mainly because it was on the consent calendar. And they also said that the agenda description was insufficient. The letter requested that the city cease and desist from those violations and requested that the city take more actions, re-agendize the item with a more complete description of the subject matter, put it on regular business and not consent, allow public comment on the item, and separately discuss the item prior to a vote. So tonight's recommended action is by motion to authorize the mayor to send the district the letter that's attached to your staff report to cure any alleged violations of the Brown Act. And as I indicated before, that letter has been carefully drafted to fully comply with the state law and the, including if the City Council will consider adopting a resolution on the next agenda item following a staff report, a public comment, and the council discussion as requested by the attorneys for the district. So that concludes my oral report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from colleagues? Seeing none at this time, I'm going to go ahead and we're going to open it to the public. This is for item A under conduct of business, if there's members of the public or others that wish to speak, if you could raise your hand now. And then we're going to have the city clerk bring you in.
First is Peter Hanley.
All right, yes. Good evening, Mayor Medina and City Council members. I'm here on behalf of the San Mateo Union High School District as its board president. And our attorney will also speak on behalf, on behalf of the district. Also here this evening is our CBO, Yancy Hawkins. Our superintendent, Kevin Skelly, will be joining if possible. He had another meeting this evening. At your meeting of December 14th, we expressed concern that the City Council was approving a resolution that uniquely impacted the Crestmore site, which is owned in its entirety by the high school district. We also expressed concern that this was being done on the consent calendar without any meaningful discussion and with limited opportunity for input by the public and by the high school district. The City Council nevertheless approved the resolution without making any comments whatsoever. Because of the importance of this issue to the high school district and the many San Bruno residents that, that we both serve, the district raised concerns about the manner in which the city adopted its resolution. We, we much appreciate that the item has now been added as a separate action item and that the title of the item has been clarified to make clear that the council will be addressing Crestmore. Transparency in these matters is an important component of what both our agencies do. Towards that end, I'd like to add that the letter submitted on behalf of the district to the city regarding Crestmore and the city's handling of this matter be made public by the city. Specifically, I am referencing the correspondence from our legal counsel dated December 14th, 2021, and December 22, 2021. The public deserves to know what impact the actions being taken by the city may have, both on the district and on the community. Thank you again for the initial steps to make this matter more public by the action you now have on your agenda. We look forward to more open treatment of these important issues moving forward, and we continue to hope to have more opportunities for meaningful dialogue around these important issues. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next is Harold Freeman.
Good evening. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can.
Excellent, thank you. My name is Harold Freeman. I'm a partner with the law firm of Lazzano Smith, and we do represent San Mateo Union High School District in this matter. I want to start by thanking and stating my appreciation to the city that the concerns that we raised under the Brown Act, perhaps there's not complete agreement about those concerns, but they were taken seriously. And I appreciate and support the action that the board would be taking tonight to commit to treating these issues differently moving forward and to, again, allowing board discussion on what's a very important resolution to the school district and the city. Typically, when you have consent calendar items, they are routine, recurring. They are not controversial. And clearly, from the school district's perspective, the resolution that the city previously adopted and will reconsider tonight is not routine. In fact, in 28 years of working with public agencies, I've yet to see anything quite like this before. It is unusual for reasons that we'll discuss more on the next item. It is significant, it is controversial, and it's the district's hope that these types of items moving forward can be discussed openly and that the public can be kept informed. We did see, and I did not reach the board president in time to let him know that the letters that we had submitted are now up on the city's website. We appreciate that. We hope that they'll be read by the city council and those in the city itself because it does raise significant issues. I also wanted to note that we noticed on tonight's agenda that you changed the language for your consent calendar items to indicate that only city council members can pull an item for discussion from consent calendar. That is a change from prior city practice in policies that the city had adopted previously. We do hope that matters relating to Crestmore and these very important issues to the city about the future of workforce housing for the school district, about the future of potential development on the site, for the provision of play fields to, adequate play fields to the residents of San Bruno, are items that will not fall on the consent calendar in a way that we will not be able to ask for separate discussion. And we'd encourage again that those be kept on the regular calendar board or the city council. Again, we thank you for taking the actions you're considering taking tonight to clean up some of these practices in our mind, and we look forward to discussing them further with you. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
I see no other hands. One moment. Jeremy Sarnicki.
Hello, everyone. It's a shame that Councilmember, Councilmember Hamilton can't speak up for the Crestmore neighborhood because I quite frankly think it's a shame that invaluable public land is sold off to be made into housing. And the council has no vision for how some sort of zoning update can change the model of single-family homes to more of a higher-density housing project so that we can have open spaces preserved for the community to benefit from. And that will all say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Last call for anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item. Okay, with that, then we're going to bring it back to the council for any discussions or comments. And first I'll ask the city attorney if there's anything that we need to go over.
Certainly, thank you. Only a very brief comment. I would like to thank the representatives of the district for their suggestions. And just to note for the record, that the correspondence sent to the city by the district is a matter of public record. It is included in the staff packet. Thank you for that suggestion. It's on the city's website, and well, it's certainly part of the record at tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion from council or action? This is a, the, the authorization of sending a letter, and this would need a motion and a second if there is action.
Through the chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the letter to cure the alleged Brown Act violations.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Second on the question. Councilmember Medina, do you?
Yeah, I was just hoping that we could have city attorneys Zaffarano comment that it's the recommended compliance with, with the law, that Councilman Hamilton isn't, is recused from this topic. It's not choice, it's the law.
Well, well, as, and, and I'll just, as Councilmember Hamilton said, as he has said from the beginning, due to his home and its proximity, which used to be 500 feet, which is now 1,000, he is recused, which is advised by the attorney, which is probably the wise thing, obviously. So, yes.
And yes, Councilmember Medina and Mr. Mayor, the, the law presumes that if you live within 1,000 feet, if any, any of the property is within 1,000 feet of a project, then you're presumed to have a conflict and need to recuse yourself.
Thank you.
Okay, so call for the question. Roll call, please.
Councilmember, not Hamilton, Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mason.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries. And Councilmember Hamilton is recused.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to next item under conduct of business, which is item B. City clerk.
Item seven, seven B, adopt resolution confirming that general plan open space and recreation policy. OSR hyphen eight requires dedication of approximately 12 acres of playing fields at the former Crestmore High School site at 300 Piedmont Avenue, San Bruno, California.
Thank you very much. We'll turn it over to Director Wu, please.
Yes, good evening. I forgot I'm supposed to share my screen. Give me a moment. All right, so let's share my screen.
Mayor Medina, I believe that Director Wu has, is present, so just one moment.
Thank you.
All right, are we able to see the presentation? I'm hoping thumbs up. Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of City Council. My name is Pamela Wu. I am the city's Community and Economic Development Direct, Department Director, and I will be presenting item seven B regarding the staff's recommendation for city council to re-adopt a resolution conforming thus. General Plan Open Space and Recreation Policy OSR hyphen eight requires dedication of approximately 12 acres of playing field at the former Crestmore High School site at 300 Piedmont Avenue, San Bruno. And just a FYI, this is a follow-up item to the previous item that has been presented by City Attorney Zaffarano. Start with the background. As City Attorney Zaffarano mentioned, on December 14th, City Council adopted a resolution to confirm the interpretation for general plan policy OSR eight that new development will require the preservation of fields currently occupying approximately 12 acres during that meeting. And the reason for that is that we have seen the school district recently soliciting proposals from developers to reuse the Crestmore site. Although there has been no formal application submitted to the city for review, we, City Council would like to reaffirm that general plan policy OSR, along with other general plan policies, will be required for new development. Subsequently, on December 22nd, as City Attorney Zaffarano explained, the city received a letter from the district, and I believe the attorney from the district also opined previously on the item. Please note that this item is not to further discuss the Brown Act allegation that has been brought in, but we're focusing on the OSR policy. The main discussion, as, as presented in the December 14th staff report, the Crestmore High School playing field, as were developed by the school district, have been used extensively by the public and maintained with public funds. Since 1987, when the high school was closed, the playing fields have been maintained and managed by the city, remain open to the public for active and continuous use, and provide an important recreational resource for the community. So we have also included this exhibit in the staff report to show that the Crestmore High School has been identified in various city documents as providing 12 acres of recreational opportunity for the city of San Bruno residents. For instance, general plan policy OSR table 5.3 states that the preservation of the playing field is as the matter of a public policy. Further, general plan policy OSR dash eight and other parts of the housing element program 2 point D, OSR dash four L U D dash one also stating the same purpose. For the full text of these policy, I will not reiterate during my presentation, but they are included in the staff report for your reference. Other than the city general plan, San Bruno Municipal Code Section 12.76.030, Part of Zoning Code, also was adopted and protect, to protect and promote the public health, safety, comfort, convenience, and general welfare of the city. And additionally serves to provide a precise guide to the physical development of the city in order to achieve the land uses and open spaces described in the general plan. It also requires any new project to must conform with any general plan policy in order for the project to be approved. Lastly, as far as the general plan EIR analysis, the staff report also describes a mitigation as far as the OSR, OSR dash eight policy to provide ample open space recreational facility for the overall city of San Bruno. The preservation of the playing fields require not only that they be physically preserved in their present location, but also that they continue to be open to the public and dedicated to the city. This has been the city's consistent determination regarding the requirement of policy OSR dash eight. The purpose of the resolution that City Council will be reconsidered and re-adopt tonight is to reiterate and confirm that determination. The attached resolution is consistent with existing general plan policy and does not make any further amendment to the current city's general, general plan. For your consideration, staff recommends to City Council to re-adopt a resolution confirming that general plan open space and recreation policy OSR dash eight requested dedication of approximately 12 acres of playing fields at the former Crestmore High School. Please note, this is exactly the same resolution that council considered in December 2021. The tax reference, everything is exact, is exactly the same except that it says 2022, reference this year. I, that concludes my presentation, but I'll be more happy to take any questions.
Okay. Thank you very much for the report at this time. Do, does any member of the City Council have questions on the report from Director Wu this time? Seeing none, then we'll go ahead and open it to any members of the public that wish to have comments on this item, which is item seven B. Please, City Clerk.
Yes, Peter Hanley.
All right, good evening again, Mayor and City Council members. Once again, I'm, I'm here on, on behalf of the San Mateo Union High School District as its board president. Um, once again, I'm, I'm here on, on behalf of the San Mateo Union High School, uh, District as its Board President. Um, as noted on the prior item, uh, our attorney and our CBO, uh, Yancy Hawkins are both here this evening, and, uh, Superintendent Kevin Skelly is, uh, hoping to be here. Um, tonight you're, uh, considering a resolution specifically, uh, again, about, uh, the Crestmore site, which is owned in its entirety by the high school district. Uh, this is something we are therefore very interested in. Uh, and I'm here once again on behalf of all of the thousands of high school district students, families, and staff. Uh, the high school district views the redevelopment of the Crestmore site as a tremendous opportunity for the city of San Bruno and its residents. As I, uh, previously addressed with you, uh, carefully planned development has the potential to, uh, first, provide the city with much-needed housing, second, provide the district with the funding for equally-needed housing for its teachers and staff, uh, third, bring in tax revenue to all of the public agencies serving this area, including the high school district, the San Bruno Park Elementary School District, and the city itself. And fourth, provide a long-term solution to some of the city's playing field, uh, needs in, in ways that are far superior to the substandard and outdated fields now located at, at Crestmore. An interpretation of the city's general plan that takes away about half of the area of the Crestmore site that can be developed will all but ensure that the tremendous potential that I just described cannot and will not be met. The city and the community will have ample time and opportunity to work with the developer with whom the district is partnering to make this project a successful one for all the involved parties. There remains no need for the action the City Council is being asked to take at this time. So the district urges you, once again, not to approve the proposed resolution before you tonight, so the parties can all keep working and continue to work together towards the best interests of the entire community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, next speaker please.
Next speaker is Harold Freeman.
Good evening again, Harold Freeman, Legal Counsel for San Mateo Union High School District. Um, I want to start off by being as unambiguous as I can, that it's the school district's position that the action that City Council is now reconsidering tonight is both unnecessary and unlawful. Uh, when we look at a general plan that is adopted by a City Council, that general plan is given its plain meaning from the reading of the language in the plan, meaning either that your general plan means what it means, and no adoption of any resolution is necessary to clarify that, or you're changing what it means, in which case it's an amendment to the general plan, for which the school district, as the owner of the property, received no, no notice uh, consistent with the due process requirements for when you're making a general plan amendment. When we look at the actual language that's at issue here, not what we're talking about as far as your resolution, which adds new words to the general plan, what OSR eight actually says, this is the actual language, during reuse of the former Crestmore site, designated for single-family residential development, preserve the existing playing fields for recreational use per the direction of the general plan update committee. In that language, you will note that the word dedication is never used, that is inserted as part of the resolution before you tonight, and would potentially complete an unconstitutional taking of the district's property. Nowhere is 12 acres mentioned in that OSR eight, and equally, there is no mention of the present location having to be preserved. The concept seemed to be that the city wanted, in a fairly subjective way, to do something to try to keep play fields in place, and the district doesn't disagree with that. Any plan for development of the site will include appropriate solutions to playfield problems. The fact remains that there weren't 12 acres of playfields in use, that's a larger footprint than the fields that were actually in use that are referenced in OSR eight. Uh, we spoke to you at length last time, and in the letter we submitted, and has been reposted about the Housing Accountability Act, about the need for a general plan to have objective standards applied to it, and we do not believe that the city's reading tonight fits anything like an objective standard, the language of OSR eight doesn't provide an objective standard, and it's our hope that the city does not fall prey to the same error that a number of other cities around the state have made, including the city of San Mateo, who successfully sued over the issue of establishing standards that a reasonable person cannot read is being in the general plan. Uh, we believe that this resolution that you're adopting will have no legal force or effect whatsoever, and we plan to move forward accordingly. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you for your comments, next speaker please.
Next speaker is Jeremy Sarnicki.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Fantastic, well, I'd like to begin by saying I apologize if my comments were to be misconstrued as ignorance of the law. Um, I'm no lawyer, I'm merely a public advocate and an advocate for public land, and to think that this community benefit that is the 12 acres, we can talk over what the actual acreage is of those playing fields, to think that, um, this city and the city's residents would be best served by a single-family housing development is simply absurd, and I believe any resident of Crestmore, including Tom Hamilton, would agree with that. As would any other member of City Council that has enjoyed such public land, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, next public speaker please.
I see no other hands raised.
Okay. Thank you, um, la- last call for any public speakers on item seven B. If not, we bring it back to the City Council for discussion and or action. This is a resolution, if there's any action or if there's additional questions, colleagues, this is the time, Councilmember Medina.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, an observation that there is nothing in this resolution that prohibits, uh, the San Mateo Unified High School District and City to, to come to an agreement. That's it, that, this, this action doesn't prohibit continuing to, to work towards a better solution. Right?
Okay.
Maybe that's the question for the City Attorney, but.
Okay, question's been asked, City Attorney?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any other, uh, questions for discussion, Vice Mayor Medina, I'm, I'm so sorry, Vice Mayor Mason, I apologize.
Yes, I just want to thank the Union High School District for their, um, comments, and thank our staff for taking them into account, um, providing tonight's presentation, and in particular Director Wu for, um, providing a presentation that I, I think was very clear to the public, um, and really left no area for questions to be asked about what was happening tonight, thank you so much.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Salazar.
Uh, so I, I just wanted to, uh, state that, um, you know, sort of along the lines of, uh, Councilmember Medina's comments, that, you know, there's nothing here that would prevent us from, uh, starting to negotiate. I think what this does do is establish, uh, a baseline from which we can start to negotiate, and it makes, uh, uh, our position, uh, and the, the position that we've heard, uh, echoed in our community, in, in terms of wanting to preserve the, the soccer fields. Um, you know, it establishes that baseline, and then from here, we can, uh, begin, uh, in earnest some negotiations that will get, um, get us to a place that works both for the residents of San Bruno and for the, um, high school district, and, uh, so I, I, I don't feel that this is in any way go, it, this in any way should, uh, inhibit our, our ability to move forward, and it's, it's just establishing a baseline, and, um, so with that, I'd like to make the motion to approve the resolution uh, confirming the, uh, the general plan, um, uh, open space and recreation policy, OSR eight, uh, and the other details outlined in the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Salazar, second by Medina, roll call please.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mason.
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye, I do, uh.
Councilmember Hamilton, recused.
Thank you for the clarity, uh, do want to thank staff, and I also want to thank the high school districts here, and, and there has been, uh, I believe, a collaboration that has, uh, begun before the property was put up, uh, sale, but do appreciate everybody, uh, being here at Chris, uh, everybody's community. With that, we will go ahead and move on to item C, under conduct of business, City Clerk.
Item seven C, accept the city's annual comprehensive financial report, the Measure A and W fund reports, and the memorandum on internal controls and required communications for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021.
And we'll go ahead and turn this over to our Finance Director.
Bonjour, I believe she's coming in the room now.
Thank you, Mayor, good evening, Mayor, and, um, Honorable Member of the Council, and I am, uh, my name is Chen Yu-Sung, the Finance Director. I'm going to deliver a presentation for the annual comprehensive financial report for the city of San Bruno for the fiscal year 2020, 21. This presentation is going to be delivered jointly by me and, um, David Alvey from, uh, Mason Associates. Now, first, let me share my screen. Sorry, this is, uh, in the interesting way. Sorry, a little technical, a little bit glitch here, trying to do the slideshow.
It looked like you were displaying the right presentation.
Yeah, I am, can you see my screen now, sorry, there was a little bit of glitch, somehow I was on the shared view, so it wasn't letting me to do the slideshow, can you see the full screen?
Yes, yes.
Okay, yes, sorry about this. So our objective, objective today is to ask the Council to receive the annual comprehensive financial report, Measure A and Measure A, Measure A and Measure W reports, memorandum on the internal controls and other communications for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2021. And our agenda, including some notes and notes, basically the structure of the ACFR. And we, we will also report the results of the audit, that will be, uh, reported by David Alvey from Mason Associates. And after that, I'll provide some financial highlights on general fund and enterprise funds, and I'll also give a brief review on the pension liability when it's, uh, how it's being increased, and then, um, next, we'll be moved on to the Measure A and H, A and W reports, and I will, uh, end it with, um, a request to the Council and open it up for questions. So the ACFR, we used to call it CAFRA, but right now, um, GFOA changed the name called Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. It's the same thing, the city retained Mason Associates for many years, and they, they are hugely support, um, help for the city to complete the, the annual report. Um, the, the, the ACFR is prepared by the city staff in accordance with, as, with the requirements by the government Accounting Standard Board, as well as the municipal, city's municipal code. And the report generally is divided in several sections, the introduction section is encompassed of the lateral middle and, and city org chart, and then certification of achievement. And the, the city received a certification of achievement for the reporting down for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2020. I believe the city has been receiving that certificate, uh, many years, uh, in a row. The next section is the financial section, which usually provides the overall financial information of the city, including government-wide and fund-specific reports, will also ha- provide, uh, internal independent auditors' reports, and, uh, also a management discussion and analysis of the city's activities. The note to the financial, uh, statements, uh, usually provide a great deal of the context to help us explain the numbers, the trends, the issues, and other considerations of the city financial report to the reader. And the last statistical section is, uh, it provides a broad range of operational, economic, and historic data that, uh, adds more context to assessing the city's financial, uh, economic condition. Next, I'll hand the presentation to David Alvey, uh, who is the Audit Partner from Mason Associates to discuss the audit results with the Council. David?
Great, thank you, uh, good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, uh, my name is David Alvey, and I'm a CPA and Audit Partner at Mason Associates, and we are the city's independent external financial auditor. So we have for you today, uh, as was discussed earlier, the, uh, annual comprehensive financial report for the year ending June 30th, 2021, for your review. Um, the audit from a high level, really high level overview, uh, is really broken into two phases. We have an interim phase and a final phase. During the interim phase, which happened in the summer of 2021, we come in and we look at the city's internal controls, um, and we're really looking for segregation of duties, and we start looking at the internal controls by doing what's called the brainstorming or, uh, or audit planning meeting with my team, so it's the whole audit team, and we look at the city's financials and try to identify areas of a potential risk, and we have to develop an audit plan to mitigate those risks in order to rely on those internal control environments, settings, the, the bones, if you would, of the, the city. And when we're looking at that, we're looking at to make sure that not a single person can initiate, approve, and record a transaction. So we do that by testing payroll, we pull samples of payroll transactions, we pull disbursements, we look at capital assets, um, cash receipts, bank reconciliations, all to make sure that there's proper segregation of duties, that nobody could take one of those areas from beginning all the way through approval to the record-keeping. Then, once we get an idea of how the ins and outs of the city work, then when we come back after the books are closed at, for our final phase, and that happened in October, um, now we look at the ending balances, you know, does that ending balance of cash match that bank reconciliation, match that treasury report? Um, we're looking at, we, we also send out third-party audit confirmations, so we send confirmations directly to the banks, um, to the, the attorney, and they directly come back to us, um, with, without going through the city's, or city staff, so we can confirm those balances and through any outstanding liabilities. We do what's called an analytic. confirm those balances and any outstanding liabilities. We do what's called an analytical review, where it's a very high-level review, you know, why this particular expense doubled or, or shrunk. And then we get a response from city finance staff, and we test those responses to make sure that those are accurate. And then finally, we help prepare the financials. And what I mean by that is we put them into our audit software, and we create the, the financial statements, but we're not booking any transactions without, uh, city finance staff approval, and we're not taking, um, uh, we're not booking anything without them knowing. Next slide. So the, the results of the audit, and, and really, it's, uh, page one of the annual comprehensive financial report is the audit opinion. And technically, that's the, the one, those pages are the ones that my firm owns. And I'm pleased to say that it is an unmodified audit opinion, a clean opinion. Um, it's the highest level of assurance that a CPA firm can give. So congratulations, you passed your audit. And really, what the audit does is let you know as a city council that the financials that you have in front of you, in my firm's opinion, are free from material misstatement and also are following, uh, generally accepted accounting principles. Next slide. Along with the, also one thing, uh, talking about audit opinions, the measure A and measure W reports also clean audit opinions, no findings on either of those two documents as well. Um, this, this fourth document is the memorandum on internal controls and required communication. Uh, this is also known as a management letter. And it's my firm's communication to the city council of things that we found during the audit. And we, we do have, uh, a material weakness that we want to bring to your attention, having to do with the city net enterprise fund, just that negative, uh, fund balance and is, is growing. Um, the deficit each year is, you know, varies. To keep that in mind, that you can, um, you know, look to that and try to appease that issue and have a plan for the city net, uh, enterprise fund. And I know the city is working on that and have, have made considerable steps to try to improve that fund. The rest of the document, um, is the required communication, and that's required for me to tell you that we had no disagreements with management's. We found no unusual transactions we need to bring to your attention. We had no issues with management's accounting estimates, you know, like depreciation, fair market value, certain assumptions for the pension liability, and we had no difficulties in performing the audit. Um, one thing also in the audit opinion I want to bring up, that there were two new government accounting standards boards pronouncements. It was mentioned that the, the name of the report has changed now. It's the annual comprehensive financial report. But there was also GASB eighty-four having to do with the fiduciary funds, and it changed the way, uh, agency funds are now recorded as custodial funds, and that had very minimal impact and more of a financial reporting. No, uh, restatement needed for that. Um, also, I'd just like to point out that, you know, in, in current year, your general fund, actually, the revenues exceeded your expenses by about eight million dollars. So you have a surplus or an increase in your fund balance by eight million, whereas last year, I know there was a little bit of a, of a deficit or a decrease in fund balance. I think it's like one point two for the year June thirty, uh, two thousand twenty. So that's good news. And I'm, we're seeing that a lot with our, um, all of our clients, Mason Associates, that, you know, uh, we're starting to see those sales tax numbers come back up, hopefully to pre-pandemic levels. Um, and also some funding from the state helps out our cities as well. With that, I'd just like to hand it back over to you on, and, and thank you for, uh, thank your finance staff. You guys have a very great staff. Um, your finance director and Darlene, your finance manager, uh, you guys have a great team under you.
Thank you, David. And I really want to thank you. I know David is supposed to be on vacation, and I really appreciate that you take some time off from your, away from your well-deserved vacation time and then participate in this presentation. I really appreciate you. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Now, let me continue on with the finance, uh, city's financial presentation. Um, so the, we, first, we want to provide a general fund summary. Um, first of all, I want to clarify, the, in this ACFR general fund presentation is a combination of a general operating fund, measure G, and, uh, some reserve funds. So it's very different from what we talked about during the budgeting, that very narrow, during budgeting, we, when we say gen- general fund, we often refer to the general operating fund. It's a very, has a very narrow scope. In the ACFR, the general fund is much bigger. Um, so in combination, the general fund revenue increased by nine point nine million from the previous fiscal year, mostly contributed by sales tax and then community benefit payments from developers. And expenditure was slightly below just point two million, two hundred thousand, thousand dollars below than the previous year. It was a result of operation reduction and the citywide expenditure control in response for COVID. So city staff and the council had done excellent job, tried to control the expenditures and cut down, um, the budget. And then we have done very well during the fiscal year two thousand twenty one. So here is a look of the general fund balance, um, for, as of the June, uh, for fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. Beginning balance of all the fund areas I was mentioning is all general funds, meaning general operating fund, reserve fund, and the measure G. We began the year with a twenty seven point four million, uh, balance. We received fifty six point two in revenue, million in revenues, expenditures forty eight point two. And we have a surplus. We had a surplus of eight million, that was mentioned earlier by David. And then we ended the year with, uh, combined general fund balance of thirty five point four million dollars, which is really a great accomplishment for the, for this fiscal year. Um, now, we want to compare the general fund revenue, uh, for, um, against the final budget, actually revenue received and, um, versus the final budget. So the final budget means all the revised budgets, amended budget. At, at the end of the fiscal year, we have about fifty two million revenue budget, and then the actual received was, uh, was four point, almost four point two billion more than the budget. I want to highlight some, um, I like some explanation, some change, big dollar amount changes. Taxes, as we all know, mostly coming from sales tax. And, and we have some sales tax sharing agreement with, um, some vendors, and then they really contributed our, uh, sales tax increase. Uh, we also saw some moderating, including property tax and then TOT tax. Um, license and permits are practically not changing much, only twenty, twenty eight thousand dollars, although I was just not going to talk too much about that. Intergovernmental, uh, in, um, we received about one hundred thirty four thousand dollars more in the budget, mostly because we booked the revenue from fire department for strike team reimbursement. Uh, last year, we had a lot of wildfires, and our fire de- fire department staff, uh, helped out with other, um, districts, and then we are going to be reimbursed for their efforts. And so that helps with intergovernmental revenues. Charged for services, which is mostly contributed by, um, by the rentals and the recreation fees. So because of the COVID, we budgeted a little bit less, and in reality, uh, we received a little bit more money, a little bit more revenue than we had budgeted. Buying the floor features, you see a, uh, a kind of a equal, um, kind of a negative revenue against the budget. You know, we received three hundred twenty six thousand dollars less than we had budgeted. Mostly, it was because of the parking, um, parking fines. Uh, we had limited, limited staff in police department, and we were not able to write as many parking tickets. Also, there were a legal limitation. We were not, um, we, we cannot use a tile, tire chalk, um, uh, to, uh, con- to, to conduct parking enforcement, and there is no alternative ma- mechanism, uh, to, to replace that. So that's why we're not able to receive as much parking fine revenue as we did with, as we had hoped. Um, use of money and property, this is a really com- uh, complex, um, math, uh, concept. It's related with a fair value adjustment for investments. I will leave it to, um, until later. I'll try to explain and the council better with another couple of slides. Uh, let's talk about, let's skip that and then look at other revenues. The other revenues is really re- uh, related with, uh, um, community benefit payment by some developers. Uh, we didn't modify the budget along the way, uh, but we added a year with, uh, with a little more revenue to quite a mom, over al- almost six hundred fifty thousand dollars more, which is really good news for the city. So next, let me try to explain fair value adjustment for investment. The GASB requires, uh, that long-term investment, actually just longer than a year, be recorded at fair market value. Fair market value for investment is the year-end entry, accounting entry to reflect the difference between investment book values and market value. So where is negative mostly coming from? Here is a table on the, um, in this, um, in all this, on this slide, uh, can tell you why it is coming from. At the year, at the June thirty, two thousand twenty, the city, the investment has unrealized gain at that time of one point two million. Now, on June thirty, two thousand twenty one, the portfolio, uh, reali- unrealized gain became eighty, eighty three thousand dollars. Because we had booked the one point two million in revenue, uh, in earlier, um, in earlier year, and then recognized that part as the asset for the investment. We need to make, um, we need to align the fair value, fair value for the investments to be in, uh, to be consistent with market conditions. So we had to book a negative one point one million to reduce that to, to, so that's why you see a, a decrease in revenue. Investment, although the revenue are booked a year, uh, on an annual basis, but investment really is ongoing, is continuation. Um, this, the fair va- market value adjustment is not budgeted. We cannot predict how much, um, that our portfolio will be at the year-end, how much we'll, we'll see as a fair val- fair market value gain or fair market value loss. So we don't book that. Um, next one, um, I want to give you a little bit more information on fair market value. Fair market value is the present value of par and future coupon discounted at the current interest rate. Fair market value is negatively related with interest rate. My fair market value change daily and can only be realized, um, if the investment is sold. So what I want to say in this part is, even though we see fair market value as a part, as one of the revenue item in our, um, financial statement, it goes up and down, up and down, but we, we don't really, the city really doesn't realize that. If it's just, uh, we record that, and it does impact our financial, um, we impact our fund balance at the year-end, but that's really not money accessible for us. And the decreasing fair market value adjustments from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty one doesn't mean the city's portfolio lost money, lost venue value. The only means that variance between the market value and book value was smaller. Instead of being one point two million dollar a year earlier, we only see eighty thousand dollars difference this year. The city, why this money is not accessible to us? Because the city holds the investment to maturity. Our investment income, always called interest income, it's really mostly coming from coupon payments and amortization premium and discount. Um, fair mar- market value changes does not impact the city's investment income. So, um, that's not something we would use for budget at all. And usually, we take that, we, we deduct that from, uh, from the fund balance for budget purpose. Now, let's look at the general fund expenditures. Um, general expenditure, a general fund expenditure, um, comparing the budget, uh, we were one point six million dollars less than the final budget. That is really because of the, um, salary savings and the benefit savings. We have a lot of vacancy in the city, and also, we, the city staff has been, um, at, being very aggressive in controlling costs. So we completed the year with a less, with less staff, um, than, than we had planned. So that's really great accomplishment for the city. And this is the general fund available balances. So we combined, uh, we, we're, we want to get, look at the general fund reserve, um, uh, line by line, and look at the total general fund, uh, reserve, available balance at the year-end, and, and comparing with the previous year. So if you, we, the general, the fund reserve policy was established back in two thousand thirteen, I, I believe, for general fund reserve, we have a target twenty five percent of general fund expenditures. Um, twenty five presented budget expenditures will be about twelve point four million dollars. We ended the, ended, and this year with, um, twelve point three million dollars, which is, uh, slightly more than the last year. Um, contingency, we have a target of one point five million. Last year, we only ended with, uh, one point three, and this year, we have five point five. Um, emergency disaster reserve, um, I believe the, the target is three million. We're still behind the three million target. So with this year, we were slightly more than last year, but it's only two million dollars. Um, capital improvement, and one time initiative, we have a target five point six, five, five million. Um, this year, we have quite a bit more than last year, it's one, uh, nine point nine. Measure G, there is no target, but we accumulating revenue as well. Uh, the expenditure only, uh, has been approved, appropriated by, needs to be appropriated by the measure, measure G, recommended by the measure G committee and appropriate by the council. So we do not, thus, the fiscal year twenty twenty one is the first year we received a full year revenue for measure G. Um, we ended the year with, uh, a surplus of one point two million. General fund equipment, we had a little bit of increase on the reserve, it's three point seven million. So total reported fund balance for general fund is thirty, thirty four point six million dollars. Um, and then, but as we talked about, city net has a desk, has a, you know, cash deficit that been borrowed from general fund. Last year, the cash balance was thirteen point, uh, six, and cash def- deficit was thirteen point six million. And this year, the deficit grew to fourteen point one million. So, um, netted out the city net cash def- deficit, um, total general fund available balance at the end of the fiscal year twenty one was twenty, just twenty and a half million dollars. Next, in the next slide, fourth slide, I will give you some highlights on the enterprise fund. Water, Water Fund, um, ended the year with a net, with a net position of a five point four million dollars. So at the end, net, oh, sorry. Water Fund has a surplus of five, five point four million dollars for the fiscal year, and ended it with the year with the net position of sixty five, um, point three million dollars. Um, not all sixty five millions are all restricted. There's some, um, they have some encumbrances and committed a dollar amount, and also have some investment in capital assets. They do have all restricted, restricted in that position and some balance, uh, for additional appropriation by the council at almost three, nine million dollars. Um, during the budget, we forecasted of Water Fund, um, out of four, five years. They have, um, about, um, seventy eight million dollars in CIP, um, development needs for the future, for the next five years. And I, I believe in twenty four, twenty five, we estimate this Water Fund may go into a deficit if the revenue does not come up, um, does not improve. So that's, next will be the wastewater fund. Uh, wastewater fund has a surplus of four, five point eight five million dollars, ended the year with the next net position of sixty six point four million dollars. Again, some of the sixty six million are, uh, encumbrances and investment capital assets. So the unrestricted net position of fund balance is about thirty seven point two million. For the next five years, wastewater fund also has a significant of CIP development need. Um, but our current forecast, um, believes that wastewater fund will be able to, uh, be self-reliant for the next five years. Duana Water Fund, um, actually has a deficit of this year about, um, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. It reduced the fund, um, net position of the fund to just a little bit over five million dollars, but the fund, ma- majority. But the majority of the net position are encumbrances and committed spending, also some investment in capital assets. So the unrestricted net position of a stormwater fund is only forty-four thousand dollars. I really believe the stormwater fund will go into deficit completely as as end of this current fiscal year, meaning FY twenty-one, twenty-two. CityNet, they end this year with a little bit better picture than the previous year. We know CityNet had been in in negative or in a loss several years in a row, but the loss this year is quite a bit smaller than the previous year. So the negative position in CityNet fund was about nine hundred thousand dollars, just a little bit over nine hundred thousand dollars. And their end their net ending net position is a negative seventeen point nine million dollars minus taking out the investment in capital assets, their true unrestricted net position is actually almost twenty million dollars. They do have a cash deficit borrowing from general fund, general fund at fourteen point one million, and this is an interfund loan from general fund to fund various capital improvements. Staff are researching on the newly approved federal law on a federal bill on infrastructure. We all heard about that and it's about the over trillion dollar bill and we will find to see if some of the funding can be applicable for the CityNet project, work to the fiber to the home project. Staff will have a study session with with the council in the coming months to talk about feasibility of the project and then funding and the proper funding for for that project. Pension, our pension cost has continued to grow. For fiscal year twenty twenty-one, the city contributed ten point five million dollars in pension benefits. Our pension contribution, city, city only, city's contribution spending contribution for twenty-one, twenty-two is estimated to be about almost twelve million dollars. But that pension liability increased by, oh, sorry, seven point six million dollars when the sum of contribution and investment income trailed behind liability accruals. Unfortunately, the pension continues to grow, pension liability to continue to grow. Here is the pension cost trend. As you can see, our contribution for UAL contribution continue to grow year after year. And then this employer concentration of contribution of a percent of total payroll is also going into a into a increasing curve. And the rate is going to peter out based on this estimate in twenty, in fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six and then fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven, but the dollar amount actually is going up. So I think there is a projection in the increasing payroll for for this for the city's contribution for the pension. The pension has amortization plan. Currently, I think our amortization schedule is to two thousand forty-three. The amortization is taking a relative level payment to retire the pension. Although because the net pension liability increase, we do see there is slight increase in this model on the annual contribution towards the pension plan. But based on what the city had decided with the CalPERS, our current plan is still amortize all all the outstanding on the liability completely by two thousand twenty, two thousand forty-three. Next will be the measure A report. Measure A report is to ensure the compliance with agreement for distribution of semi-tail county measuring funds for local transportation purpose. We received a one million revenue in measure A and two point four million dollars was appropriate on street rehabilitation, street median, traffic calming managers that will repair and access pedestrian ramps. The reason we were able to appropriate a little bit more is we had some of that funding on previous years. Measure W report is to ensure compliance with agreement for distribution of semi-tail county measure W fund local transportation project. We received about half a million in revenue and then a little bit less than a point four million was spent on street rehabilitation project. Both reports were in compliance. With that, I would request the city council to receive and accept the presentation to the city's annual comprehensive financial report, the measure A and the measure W fund reports on compliance and memorandum on internal control for the fiscal year ended June thirty two thousand twenty-one. Before I open this up for a question, I want to say a special thanks to all the departments of the city. With everybody's help, we would not be able to finish this, we would not be able to compile this comprehensive report successfully. And special thanks to our auditors and our finance staff, Darlene Wong, Shawang Hee, and Ding Lu, and they've done a tremendous job job to complete this financial report. It's a huge report and special thanks to everybody who included. I'll be opening up for the questions.
Thank you very much for the report and the information. This time, are there questions from colleagues on the report? Vice Mayor Mason.
Thank you. I may have missed it. If I did, please let me know, but I didn't hear the ARPA. And I'm curious to know how the ARPA funds play into the numbers we're looking at because based on just some notes I have, in the general fund, the change was out four million one hundred eighty-four thousand seven hundred and ten dollars. And I believe that what we were due in July of twenty twenty-one was four million twenty thousand seven hundred and forty dollars. And I'm wondering if that's if they're reconciling each other or are we really at like a change of four million one hundred eighty-four thousand seven hundred and ten dollars?
Oh, four million one hundred eighty-four. And that's the general fund revenue comparing with the budget. So that's just the the actual revenue we receive compared with budget. ARPA is not part of the revenue receipt. We did not receive ARPA revenue until July two thousand twenty-one, though ARPA will be recorded as twenty-one, twenty-two revenue. And we only receive about five five point one million this in July.
Okay, and so you so you're saying that the funds that we received really don't we don't play a role in the numbers we just saw?
That's correct. Not not obviously not does not play a role.
Okay, very helpful, thank you. And then you said that there was a one million six hundred six thousand eight hundred and six dollar, yes, recovery that it had to do with a lot of vacancies in the city? And I'm just curious if those vacancies were positions that had been budgeted with the council approval or were they vacancies that were prior to that fiscal year's budget?
There are vacancy included in the budget, so it happens throughout the year. So some of the position included, I'll answer that and I'll hand it to the city manager. He probably knows more than I do. I only been here for part of the year. So I know there is a position, even though the city had cut off the position, there are still position budgeted about the or there are some vacancies in the CED specifically. And and then there are some kind of a problem. I think the parking racket that community service also have some maybe reduce staffing and then really create a lot of savings for the for the for the city. And there also the final budget for the public safety was a little bit less was more than the actual spending as well. With that, I'll hand it to the to the city manager. I'm sure he'll give you more comprehensive answer regarding the savings.
Great, and then if you, I was gonna say, then if you could stand, because my last question is for the city manager. So go ahead, Javon.
Sure. To the mayor and thank you, Vice Mayor Medina. Yeah, I just want to expand upon Director Sun's. Did I mess up Linva Mason again?
You, you, you did the same thing I did earlier. Don't worry about it.
You're okay, go ahead, go ahead.
I, Mason, yeah, sure, just to expound upon the one point six million dollars savings in the general fund expenditures, I think that's what you were referring to. I just wanted to to clarify that those savings were not exclusive to personnel, but a large percentage of them were. And Director Sun was exactly right that part of those savings came from funded positions that were vacant vacant for all number of reasons. A unanticipated vacancy occurred during during a year and then there was a three-month timeframe that that position was vacant before we hired a new staff person. Or if the position was budgeted, it began the year as they budgeted the vacant position and maybe it wasn't filled until a few months into the fiscal year. But in totality, on the city's expenditure, adopted expenditure budget, forty-nine point seven million, the actual number was less than that, came in at forty-eight point one million, and so that amounted to a budgeted savings of one point six billion, but largely personnel, but also some operating savings as well.
Okay, and as a follow-up to that question, which I do, I just have one more, but just a follow-up to that question, are those positions, positions that we're likely going to see wanting to fill in the future? I just want to have a real grasp of where we are financially.
Absolutely, some of those positions are actually filled now in that they just for some point of time last year, they were vacant and there was a financial savings typically happened during during the course of a fiscal year. We do budget a certain percentage of vacancy savings, typically around three to five percent. And so what this means is that there were a little more vacancies than than were anticipated that happened during the fiscal year. And we will certainly go through this when we launch our twenty-two, twenty-three budget conversations and give the city council a full summary of frozen, filled, vacant position as a new starting place for the next year's budget.
And then just my last question is, the CityNet, very bleak numbers, what are the next steps there? Will that be coming to the council at some point with a plan or recommendation or what are what are the next steps?
Yes, yes and yes. There is on our city council plan, a study session planned for the first quarter. We are aiming for March of this fiscal year, having full conversation around CityNet. Absolutely numbered that in one level are headed in the wrong direction and on another level, much better than they were in prior years, but but a significant hurdle that the city needs to grapple with. And so as we mentioned, we are looking into federal infrastructure funding that which has been passed and that is proposed. In addition, it's worth noting, and we'll talk about it in detail, that part of that CAFR or the annual financial audit negative value is all depreciation, right? As the infrastructure ages, there's a negative effect on the fund balance that is different than the cash deficit that we showed that that was shown. So whereas the total negative fund balance at nineteen million, the actual cash deficit old to the city is fourteen million. And so there's a nuance there to understand depreciation and accounting treatments versus actual cash. And so we'll talk about that and go through numbers in detail and certainly receive city council direction about next steps.
Councilor Medina.
Yes, thank you. There's a lot of information in here. I appreciate all the work. Clearly, as Vice Mayor Mason mentioned, the the CityNet is is a concern, an ongoing concern. The losses are reduced, that's great, and I look forward to a solution. Will we talk about that in March? My question, my first question, I guess, is is about slide twenty-three. It's about pensions with the increased unfunded pensions. I think the city manager once described it very well as a mortgage that, yes, it's a lot of money, but over time, you're making payments on it. And my question is, based on this graph, is the year that we are clear, we're across zero, is that just getting pushed out further? I mean, it it's looks like it's going to be achieved, but is it just continually getting pushed further out? Is there a way you can address that question of what's happening there?
I'll do my best to address it. Then Javon, do you want me to talk about?
No, Director Sun, go ahead, and then I have a couple of comments that I'll close out with.
Okay, so I believe, I don't know exactly, I believe the city had entered into agreement with the CalPERS to develop this amortization schedule. What I heard it was for thirty-year amortization schedule. So it probably has been existing since the two thousand thirteen, fourteen range, because you look at the certain year, two thousand forty-three, it's about thirty years from two thousand thirteen. So we've been amortizing this gradually every year. The only change, you know, the the term of the amortization has not changed. You know, I've been looking at the historic report, the amortization always always assumed to completely amortize the unfunded liability by two thousand forty-three, but the number and for the total number amortization changed because our unfunded liability has been gradually creeping up. So the consequence of that, if we are, we're still, you know, committed to the term, but because we need to complete the amortization at that term, our annual contribution is also increasing little by little. So far, we have not changed the term and it is on my to-do list. I'm going to have a conversation with the CalPERS actuary and to understand better to see if there's anything else we can do to make this payment, this amortization schedule more amenable to the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Sun. And just to piggyback on that and address that council member Medina's comment about the the mortgage, if you will. I think this chart is best seen with the prior chart. And so if I back up one slide, this UAL unfunded liability, it's a zoomed view, but it shows the increasing contribution or payment, if you will. And then when you take a look at the next chart, you see sort of the the other portion of that bell curve going down. And so what that is, is absolutely the city and nearly every city in California that's a member of CalPERS has an unfunded actuarial liability that is amortized across a number of years. And for ours, it's approximately another twenty years of payment. And so our payments are roughly level and as the director said, they're increasing slightly, but they're 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 roughly level. And the plan is that over time, the city will pay off that unfunded life, unfunded actuarial liability, at which point we will only be paying what's called the normal cost. And that's the cost for the benefit that is fully accrued in a given year. Right now, we are essentially making two payments. We're making a payment toward the unfunded liability and we're paying the normal cost. But this graph shows when that mortgage or that unfunded liability is paid off in twenty forty-three, we will no longer be paying a payment on the unfunded liability and we will only pay that normal cost, which is showed, actually not on these charts, but on prior other slides in our in the CAFR, shows the normal cost contribution.
Mr. Mayor, just one additional comment.
Please.
In in the report, it, I found the the debt. In, in the report, it, I found the, the debt, um, interesting that, uh, we continue to make our debt payments and a couple, at least one of them is, is going away. Um, so, so there's significant progress that we're, we're, we're able to meet our requirements, and it's spelled out in, in the debt portion of, of the, uh, report. That's all my question.
Okay, thank you. Other, uh, questions at this time? I just had one, I, you, we talked about, uh, internal governmental, um, budget, there was an increase of one hundred thirty-four thousand, and it was stipulated that that was maybe due to the strike teams that went out, um, from the fire department. Are those for salaries or also salaries and reimbursement for apparatus?
There are four, but salary benefits and, uh, parrot, uh, uh, parrot.
Okay. You know, I had brought it before, we can bring this up with budgets, uh, study session, that, like, I, I, I believe that the stuff that comes back for the apparatus should be put in a side account, it's just my opinion, to have, um, for equipment. So those are very expensive e- engines and trucks, and so I, I think those things should be, um, in the future, not, not for discussion tonight, but, um, we'll bring that up maybe at the retreat. Thank you. Um, why don't we go ahead and open at this time, if there's any members of the public that would, uh, like to speak or have, uh, comments or questions on this topic, and, and the city. And if the city clerk can assist me, and.
Yes, Chair, sir and Ikey.
Hi, Council, I'd really just like to commend your actions for, um, you know, your financial stewardship over this pandemic, it looks like we have a ten million dollar surplus going into the general fund. Uh, we do have that liability that is city net services. I would like to make a quick comment, though, I just find it really peculiar, also something maybe to be proud of, that we have this huge global corporation, YouTube, which runs its operations off of our city net services. I think that's really something we should all be proud of, um, but it is, at the same time, running out of financial loss. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, next speaker, please.
There are no other hands raised.
Thank you. Uh, with that, we'll bring it back to the council for, um, additional discussion and/or option.
With the chair, if, uh, there are no other comments, I will make a motion to inter, to approve the resolution approving the financial report and the related, uh, reports.
Second.
Motion and second, Salazar Medina, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mason.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Motion, guardians.
Thank you very much. Moving on, uh, conduct of business, we'll move to seven D.
Item seventy, adopt resolution appropriating seventy-two thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars from the general fund to the community services department recreation division to fund a deputy director and unfreeze a recreation services coordinator.
Community services director.
Good evening, Mayor Medina and councilmembers, I am Amatola, your community services director, and this evening, um, community service is requesting that council adopt a resolution appropriating funds to fund a deputy director position and unfreeze the recreation services coordinator position. In this evening's presentation, um, I have quite a bit of information to go through, uh, I'm gonna provide an overview of the key issues and conditions impacting the recreation and senior division of the community services department. That are really the primary reasons for this request. We'll take a look at the programming history of the division from pre-COVID present, we'll take a look at the staffing levels as well from pre-COVID to present. We're also gonna discuss the community services deputy director position, and particularly the impact on capacity in terms of providing the ability to complete forward planning that's essential to opening the recreation and aquatic center. We'll touch upon alternatives if we do not, um, add these positions, and lastly, we'll review the fiscal impact of the request. Okay, so generally, the request before you this evening will restore recreation and seniors staffing level to the pre-COVID level of seven full-time equivalents or FTEs. We're presently budgeted at five FTEs. There are three primary concerns driving this request. The first is the day-to-day workload. I'll walk you through a detailed chart in just a minute that will demonstrate the sustained workload of the division pre-COVID to present, but some of the key areas of the work with COVID are summarized, um, here on this slide. Up concern is the programmatic increase that is right on the corner as we prepare for spring and summer and move toward a return to more normal operations. With one of our five team members on extended leave, we have only four of the five FTEs active in the recreation and senior services division. This loss of a team member exposes a certain vulnerability that we have in our ability to deliver programs. Now, I'm gonna tell you that in the many places I've worked, this is a most amazing and dedicated team, and they've been incredibly agile and adaptable to new assignments, and we've redistributed work of this absent team member. But we're really just making ends meet capacity-wise, and it's a real concern as we look to restoring programs to pre-COVID levels. The second concern is, um, or are the professional competencies that are needed at this time to lead in developing the work and the work plans and business plans for the recreation and aquatic center. So for this reason, it's imperative that we recruit a deputy director with those competencies needed to lead in developing business models for all of the programs that are new to our city that we house there. And lastly, this is time-critical. We actually do have an end date by which we need to be prepared to open this new recreation and aquatic center. If the request is approved tonight, by the time we hire and have somebody on site, that'll leave just a little over a year to accomplish a rather ambitious workload. So next, I'd like to review the, the program history of the recreation and senior services division. So in this chart, the pre-COVID programming is shown, is shown in the, the column on the left. The second column shows programs suspended due to COVID, and those programs we were doing through much of two thousand nineteen, and the closures actually occurred in March of two thousand twenty. But even though we had closures, we still got a lot of really good work going on. Contract classes were offered, but in a virtual format, Rex Best developed wrecking box activities that families could hook, pick up for take-home enjoyment. They innovated events in a way that was COVID-proof with the G story ride and jungle around the block. Um, probably most impressive was how the whole team rallied to ensure meal service program at the senior center continued and was sustained for the entire closure. We served as many as a hundred fifty grab-and-go and delivery meals, um, throughout the, the formal closure. This was a very new, staff-intensive operation, and staff from throughout the department had to be partnered to support this. Recreation also supported communications function for the entire city. So the third column shows programs returning starting around June of two thousand twenty-one. As programs start to open up, the workload distribution was relatively manageable. One thing that helped us with the ability to distribute the workload with our, our rather, um, lean staff is that the aquatic program was suspended because we closed the full facility so it could be demoed. Um, and then we were able to assign work from other programs to the coordinator that would have been coordinating the aquatic programs. As we look to spring and summer of two thousand twenty-two, um, with program grow, growing and returning to normal, we're gonna be stretched really thin. Our staffing had little room for margin for error or injury, and with one of our full-time staff on extended leave, we are concerned that we don't have the depth to adequately compensate for that absence. So with regard to staffing, staffing this, for this division has been really, um, efficient historically. Pre-COVID, there were only seven FTEs that were responsible for really full-service operation. This evening's request simply respect the recreation and seniors division back to seven employees. Their request first restores the number of recreation services coordinators to three. And we propose to freeze an administrative position elsewhere in the department so we can redirect funds towards this position. So when we get to the funding side, you'll see that we represent this as a net between those two positions. You'll also see that in the management tier, there's a shift in classifications of FTEs to support a direct, a deputy director position. Prior to COVID, there was a supervisor assigned to our after-school programs. That program was transitioned to the YMCA, so the position was not filled when it was vacated. That supervisor is effectively being converted into the, um, deputy director position. And because that position was unfunded, we need to request the full cost of the deputy director position. So restoring these will allow us more depth and flexibility in assignment distribution and the ability to actually get our work done. So I also wanted to present the staffing to you in more of a visual format with org chart comparisons. This is the organization chart from the two years prior to the pandemic, both two thousand eighteen, nineteen, and nineteen twenty. Recreation and seniors are kind of the light purple boxes on the left. In this version, the division has seven FTEs. In our current staffing model, the recreation seniors is still reflected on the left in the purple shapes. There are currently five FTEs in the division, so we are reduced by two compared to the pre-COVID structure. And as you can see, with workload, it really has been sustained, we've been doing quite a bit of work with less, but yeah, we're kind of at that tipping point of losing the battle of be able to keep providing services at a sustained level. The final graphic is the proposed organization chart. The deputy director and third coordinator are indicated in green outlined boxes. The third coordinator will allow for a manageable workload distribution for day-to-day program operations. The deputy director will allow capacity for future planning. So let's spend a little time talking about the deputy director position. For each of the new or expanded program areas, that we need to, we need to develop a variety of foundational documents. So every one of these programs are greatly expanded or completely new to the city, and we really need to look at these as very different businesses and to create a full body, a whole business model for all of those. And there's quite a body of work for each of these program areas. Some of the foundational documents and processes that we'll need to, to develop include business models, pro forma budgets, staffing projection plans, systems and procedures, quality assurance programs, contracts. We actually need to develop staff growth plans, so as we bring on new staff or even the existing staff, we actually are providing a roadmap and a guide to train the staff on how to implement these new program areas. The aquatics function in particular requires a number of regulatory guidelines and processes that need to be developed. To accomplish this, we need to bring in the department of professional who can focus on setting up these programs and systems. Now, of course, we know the alternative is not to fund these positions and resume with the current staffing level. This would mean, though, that we would need to forego all other projects and initiatives in order for the existing staff to make some headway work, some headway on the work necessary for the new facility. We would also need to either delay or develop an incremental opening plan of the rec facility based on the realistic ability to create with the existing staffing model, the systems that must be implemented prior to opening. The very real measured situation is that we don't have the capacity to do this work. There are simply not enough personnel hours when compared to the actual task hours required to put in place all of these systems. Attached to your staff report are time and task studies that demonstrate the current role of the director and the workload for the deputy director. That position's body of work focuses primarily on the business model development discussed in the prior slide. And I want to throw some numbers at you, um, that are pulled from those documents that is, that is supported, and this is for people that are kind of watching and viewing from home, that maybe aren't looking at the full agenda facet. If you look at the task and time study, the routine administrative and rec product-related work that the director is already working on constitutes about two thousand hours annually of work. That really leaves little time for additional product, for, the record of work year is two thousand eighty hours, less holidays and vacation days, just two weeks of vacation, is eighteen, is one thousand eight hundred fifty-four hours. And if an executive were to work sixty-four hours a week for thirty-two hundred hours per year, which is pretty much what most of us work here in this city, we'd still come up short when you get the actual time for the work that needs to be done in order to open this recreation and aquatic facility. In short, the community, the cumulative tasks exceed the personnel capacity to perform this highly complex work. Simply put, it's not sustainable. But this new position will allow redistribution of some of these executive tasks, but more importantly, importantly, allow a team member with a complex skill set to truly focus on the body of work that we must complete in order to open the wreck and aquatic center on schedule. The total funding request for this fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two is indicated in the column highlighted in yellow. It's a total increase of seventy, seventy-two thousand three hundred thirty-three dollars. With an anticipated start date for March or April of this year, we included four months of funding for these positions. And we also included, um, for your information, the annual, um, the annual ongoing cost to the wreck and seniors budget at two hundred sixty thousand nine hundred and eight. So that concludes my presentation, and given the information, we, um, are recommending that council consider adopting this resolution, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you for the report. And I'll turn to colleagues at this time, uh, if they have questions on the report. And we have, and, um, if it's okay, the, maybe wait for the first couple of questions, I would just say stop sharing the screen, but maybe we should wait in case we have to go back. Uh, Vice Mayor Mason.
Yeah, I was wondering if, um, put back on the screen the slide showing the dots, the different colored dots, and the program's different years, so we can take a look at it for a couple of minutes. Um, and then while you're getting that up, I wanted to better understand the, the, the way that this deputy director position has been described to us, um, because it, it was not supported in the budget round. Um, it's essentially a, a higher-level professional, um, needed to come in and ensure that when the recreation aquatic center is open, that it is a, a well-run, um, facility. And so what are the recruitment efforts, um, that are gonna be taken to make sure that the right person, uh, with the right qualifications is selected, and what does that look like?
Uh, Vice Mayor, uh, Mason, uh, there will be, uh, a, uh, full, uh, recruitment, uh, our, our recruitments are both internal and external, um, uh, and so it will be a full internal and external recruitment. Uh, but the goal of this position is to attract someone with the skill sets to, uh, be not just a deputy director, but, but, but really with, um, ideally experienced running, uh, a full-service recreation and aquatic facility like the one, uh, that we designed, uh, and that is under construction, uh, and that has experienced building partnerships, uh, with, with various entities, uh, that, uh, are mentioned in the, uh, business plan for the wreck and aquatic center, um, uh, supporting, uh, not just contract classes, uh, but also the new community room, uh, and attracting, uh, uh, individuals and groups as well as our residents to, to rent out that facility. And so it is, um, certainly will be recruited for, and we're, we're looking, uh, forward to, um, that process.
Okay, and then, um, the, the cost, I just want to make sure that is not the salary that, that's all in with benefits, and what, what was that, what was the salary, just for anybody watching?
The market-based salary for the deputy director is approximately one, uh, one hundred and fifty thousand, the all-in, uh, cost with all the rule of benefits, uh, is just under two hundred at, at a hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Uh, and so that was showed on, uh, I believe, a, a later slide that, um, the director has just showed on the screen. So, no, that is the total budgetary increase, not the salary for the position.
Right, but we'll eventually, I mean, if the goal was to continue, we're, we're looking at maybe seventy-two today, but we're really looking at two sixteen, so I just think it's important that the public be aware exactly what, you know, where this is going. Um, I, also, I think, um, one of my concerns is that we had, um, summer camps last year, and more so than normal, it appeared, were privately contracted out, and, you know, And, you know, we participated in a number of them. The kids had a great time, really enjoyed, you know, the Nerf camp, the Lego camp. They had a great time in those, but those camps were also more expensive than the traditional ones that the city has actually planned and filled, actually. And so the recreation services coordinator will maybe start working on plans to bring back that summer camp so that we can have that offering this summer again, even if not at the Recreation Aquatic Center, maybe one of the other sites in San Bruno?
Yes, the plan is to restore that program this summer. The reason we didn't do it last summer, by the time we were moving back to normal, we weren't able to have the time to recruit the numbers of part-time staff that you need to implement the camp, but we've already started the planning process this summer.
Okay, that's great. And I don't think I ever thanked them, but I think it was Kelsey and Jackie, and they did a phenomenal job last year, I have to say, coordinating all these kids with masks and running around and crying in the mornings, and it was a great job. Okay, those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton.
So the vice mayor asked my questions, and they've been answered, so thank you. Just a comment regarding the staff report and the presentation is extremely comprehensive and really helps to really illustrate what the need is and provided us with qualitative data to use to make a decision. Often, the types of requests, at least in the private sector and in the few cases that I've had in my prime on council, these types of requests are a lot more amorphous, where you have to just kind of take on faith what the work is and what is needed to complete it. But here, you provided all the detail. This is where we are, this is what we need, and this is what the gap is. And so I just wanted to say thank you for providing us with such a comprehensive report for which to make this important decision. Thank you.
Not seeing any questions at this moment, which we will come back to council. I would like to open it to the public to see if they have any comments on this topic. And again, this is item 7D. And if we could bring in the public, please.
Jeremy Serrano.
Hello, council. I would just like to comment and say that the Aquatic Center has really been a goal for the city for quite some time now. It is in honor of the tragic disaster that took place in San Bruno so many years ago. And if this director-level position would help the residents finally be able to enjoy the community benefit that is the Aquatic Center, I think it would be a fantastic thing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other speakers? Not seeing any at this time. Let's bring it back to council, and Councilmember Medina, please.
Yes, thank you. A comprehensive presentation. I wondered if you could possibly repeat for me the one slide that shows the supervisors from going to three to two to one? And one of those employees is on disability or is hurt? And we, it's interesting that when we have staff that is so small, that when something like that happens, how detrimental that is to the department. So I wanted to note that, but from the one that you said normally would run the pool, that they got transitioned to somewhere else, is that what I heard correctly?
The wonderful thing about the coordinator classification, they tend to be the generalists. And we are very fortunate to have, with Kelsey Klima and Jackie Carlisle, two coordinators that are really well-versed in a variety of programs. So they are able to fill in the void for other different program areas. So Jackie tends to run the aquatic program, but she's been able to help support the seniors center in quite an afterhole, certainly in the last year. So she has had no shortage of things to do, even though pool was closed for the summer season.
Got that. And so that's one of the positions that you're looking to?
Increase, yes.
Is that, and that's open for that position? Is that or internal? Is it either or and both, or what is it?
It'll be both.
It'll be both, okay. And then for the services supervisor, that is sufficient from three to two to one, and we're going to stay at one?
So what I will say is, we really need to look at staffing for this department as a dynamic exercise over the next few years. When we bring to you, so one of the things that the community services deputy director will be working on is the implementation plan. And that'll project staffing for the three years, probably the first three years of operation. We do anticipate that we'll be adding some supervisors as we grow our programs, but we're also trying to be very mindful of the budget, be very conservative in our request to ask what we need right now to get us through this interim until we come back for the next request with more of a specific program plan. So we can, you know, as councilmember Hamilton observed, we really want to come back with a very measured type of representation on why we need the different positions, how we reflect revenues to come in, so we can talk about the funding of the positions and the impact to the general fund in a real way and not some amorphous way. But for right now, we're okay with the one supervisor.
Okay, so the salary determination, was there a formula that was used? Was there a salary survey that was conducted? How was that salary determined?
Thank you. Councilmember Medina, the salary was set commensurate with the city's established classification plan. We do have comparable classifications within the organization, and so it was set comparable to that. And during labor negotiations processes, we undertake a full compensation study where we look at total benefits compared to a year's set, as well as during the course of a operating year, there are a number of positions that may require reclassification, and there are analysis that's done. But specific to setting of the deputy director position, it was set based on comparability to other similarly situated classifications within the city's workforce, and those are ground truth with compensation studies.
So similar to the public works deputy directors, there's a delta, and it's similar to that? Is that correct?
Yeah, there was a little bit more analysis that went into that, but yes, we do have other deputy directors and depending on the workload or education or certification responsibilities, there may be a factor up and down.
Right, okay. Another question is, is this deputy director going to be the, I'm looking at the strategic business plan, will be, that'll be the person that is, that will be in charge of the new rack? The service manager, recreation manager? That duty would be performed by the deputy director?
Yes, so I think if I can try to help reframe that a little bit, the recreation and aquatic center will be the biggest operation of the recreation division, and the deputy will be in charge of the entire division. So if you have the person with that mastery, so as we're putting together the org chart, that person will have a very key role in the operation of that facility. But that will be, but there's also seniors, there's also other programs that happen external from the facility that will also be under the purview of the deputy. There may be other positions that you'll see in the implementation plan that are a little bit more specialized in some of the work of the facility.
Got it. So there'd be, sorry?
No, I was just going to say the answer to your other question was, yes, the deputy director will be the chief person that will be assigned to develop the implementation action plan.
Right, and I wanted to give some historical, I went back and looked at our discussions on the budget and how we came to the last couple of things where we had to choose. And council decided at that point to hold off. Since then, our finances have improved. With that, where's the funding coming from for these positions?
The funding will come from the general fund.
From the general fund that we now have enough funding for? And we won't go blow our balance?
No.
Okay, okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Mason.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to make sure that the goal eventually is that the opening of the center is going to essentially be self, I guess it's going to pay for itself. Is that eventually the goal?
Vice Mayor Mason, I think that there are a number of nuances there. One, if we talk about recreation in general or park and recreation, those departments nearly always operate out of subsidy. Aquatics is a classic example. Aquatic programs are nearly always subsidized, and you really can't keep enough people in the pool paying customers to cover the pool costs. And so there will certainly be programs that have always been subsidized and programs that will be subsidized in the future. But part of the business plan will be taking a very detailed look at what programs receive subsidies. For example, many cities say, you know what, we're going to subsidize youth rec more than adult rec, or we're going to subsidize aquatics for children because it's important to teach kids how to swim, but we won't subsidize aquatics for swim teams or other higher-level swim meters. And absolutely, the new aquatic and rec center will be a completely different service model with the membership component attached to it, with certainly scholarships and sea-based programs as well as complementary programs. So that is part of the work that we've always talked about that needs to be done because we have the business plan, and now we really have about a year to work on that implementation action plan to spell out all of those details for how the building will operate. What is the ramp-up plan? What's the revenues over expenditures? What program will have what level of subsidy, et cetera?
Yeah, I think, well, because of the Recreation Aquatic Committee meeting, it was reported that the pool was really going to be the moneymaker, especially considering that we're going to be able to have an indoor pool that'll have more classes offered at night, and the weather won't be such an issue. And I don't believe that we've had a full report on the business plan, at least not publicly. And so I guess what I'm just getting at is, I understand that comparable salaries and that this is a need. I just want to make sure that we're looking to the future, trying to pay back as much as possible those, you know, what's going obviously into the running of the facility.
So in looking at the aquatics, what's happening is we're actually, because you have a year-end operation because you have indoor, we can maximize use and generate certainly more revenue and a greater cost recovery even than what we were, you know, even compared to what we had in a seasonal outdoor pool because we have the diversity of use that we can have in that facility. Based on what I've seen in other like facilities, what I've been able to do with similar type of aquatic facilities, I believe we can have a pretty high cost recovery. Aquatic programs never make money. It's a matter of the cost recovery for them. And I do think that we can be at a higher end for that. Another business model I really want to just highlight, which is considerably different than our beloved Veterans Memorial that we just demolished, we're going to have a very different type of rental facility there. And there's a demand. We're already working with partnerships with local hospitality, with convention and visitors. This is very much a revenue generator. And so when we have to create these proformers to give you that answer on what cost recovery will be. But, you know, it's a goal of ours, not to, you know, it'd be really neat if our impact to the general fund never changed. That would be a really critical goal. So, but we want to make sure we can be specific, come back before we make that commitment on what that delta is going to be. But we have all the makings and what the business plan really presented quite well. We set ourselves up for success with this facility and the programs that it can house to really yield rather high cost recoveries for recreation departments. You know, if you can get 60, I've seen at the highest 85% cost recovery, it would be nice for us to get above 60, 65. That would really be a very great spot for us to be, and I think we can achieve that with this new facility.
Okay, and then, I guess my other question is about the recreation position, not the deputy director position. But it seems like the social connection or the special needs program that's on Wednesday night seems like there's a pretty loyal following. And so just if, it doesn't have to be answered tonight, Director Matola, but when we go around the next budget cycle, it'd be good to understand which, you know, longstanding classes or programs have like a consistent following, and whether those need more resources and how we as a council can assist to ensure that those resources are available for the community that is using them. Because I just know I've signed up for certain things or I've gone to certain things, and I'm, you know, the only one there, or there's two people there. But this one, I've seen that there seems to be a pretty consistent group that attends once a week, and it would be great to be able to kind of give back more if we can. And that's it. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Medina.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to follow up. We've talked, or we've had comments on this strategic business plan. Are we going to be able to share that with the public? And when would that happen? After the new deputy director comes on board, looks at everything? The cost recovery in that plan is 64%, at least that's the target. Losses of, what costs of 1.8 to 1.2 million over the first four years. But that's preliminary, so it'd be interesting to share this plan, and when would that happen?
Sure. Councilmember Medina, the plan is public, and I believe it's on our website, but we'll confirm that. I think what you're asking for and what the public really wants is what are implementation action plan, right? We have the vision statement, which is the business plan, that articulates what the new facility can house based on its design. And we really need to take that to the next level. And that is the principal work that this deputy director will work on, and we absolutely need to bring to the city council. And we've been delayed in doing that simply due to resources. And we had that conversation around budget time. And so with the additional resources and where we said, having now broken ground, you know, getting ready to hit vertical construction in a few months, with the building set to open in the fall of '23, we really need to bring the position on and take that business plan to the next level down into a detailed implementation action plan so we can bring that to the city council and, of course, talk about it publicly. And so this, in many ways, is the first step into making that a reality.
Got it. Thank you.
Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you. So I just wanted to say, I've always been supportive of this position, and we've, this is not our first discussion on this, and, you know, we kind of went around, around last time, and it didn't get funded previously. But I'm still supportive of it. I think staff did an excellent job. Director Matola definitely in outlining and being very specific in the breakdown of the activities. We saw that previously, and I was compelled then, I'm compelled now. I just wanted to make one statement that, for me, it's difficult to make these type of decisions in a vacuum. And I say that because when we do this as part of our budgeting process, we're looking at the entirety. And this one is being made sort of And this one is being made sort of one off by itself. We're not really considering the impact. You know, I heard the statement, yeah, it'll come from general fund, but everything comes from general fund. And looking at the previous presentation, I'm looking at parks and rec and the, you know, where they had a reduction in their expenditures, it was far less than what's being asked for here. So it's gonna come out of, you know, another portion of the general fund. And, you know, the savings in the other departments were more significant, but it's because they had openings. We heard that it was because there were some unfilled positions there. So now we're pulling from those and some of those unfilled positions will, you know, we'll have to make some tough decisions there. So again, I understand this need, I definitely support it, but it would, when we're talking about balancing the entire general fund, I would appreciate, and I understand that we as the council sort of forced this decision to happen out of band, but I just want to, you know, as much as we can avoid doing this type of budgeting out of band, I, you know, I really think it makes everything easier. It helps me feel more comfortable about what we're doing, you know, to make these things fit. And so, yeah, that was basically my comment, just, you know, it makes it a little harder to understand what the true impact is when we do it this way. So, you know, just sort of a note, not so much to staff, but, you know, to us as well is like, let's, you know, let's realize that when we make decisions at budget time that need to come back later, it does put us in this position and we're, you know, now, you know, we have to do it because of the timing now and we're running out of runway on the rec center. So I've rambled long enough. Thank you.
Thank everybody for their comments and questions. I share a lot of what Councilmember Salazar has just said, so I'll try not to, you know, say everything again. I think the March and April start date is, I think it's great to be optimistic, I just think that that's tight. I also do agree too, when we're looking at budgets and bringing on, I like to look everything in its totality, have it before us and have it balanced. I know we have a retreat scheduled for next month, I would have thought this would be a great topic in which to bring up that, hearing from each director or chief or whatever of their department that comes forward. And that was kind of the time to kind of, where are we at? Where are we going? Where are the needs? Where do we need to focus our resources and energy? And I like to do that in a global setting. I do understand that the council, we felt that at those times, it was already stated, tough decisions had to be made and the resources, there are already so many. But I always do worry too, because we've approved and we're gonna potentially approve more. I think what, you know, where the concern I have too, is that basically with what I've heard in the staff report, it's either postpone council initiatives or delay the opening of the Recreation Aquatic Center. That's what it comes down to if this doesn't occur. So, you know, I have to have faith in staff that we're to a point, which, you know, as far as the business plan, which has been asked about and trying to get all those nuances. I remember being on staff when they opened the senior center and there was a lot of work that had to be done. It was a whole new facility to the operation and it was operated mainly on volunteers. And that was the outage back then, nineteen eighty-seven was that not much staff was needed, but it was volunteers. But we all know times adjust and evolve and, you know, every department of this team, of this city has operated very lean. And even though we're trying to create more of the maintenance in our parks, it is not when I was here. Because I know we don't do the fields, I know we're not doing the trees. And so things have modified and changed. So anyway, I think I just wanted to make sure that that was stated, similar to what Councilmember Salazar said, as note to self for all in staff, that I think in the, there are times to sit down and do these things. And what I'm hearing from staff is that it's, we're at that point and we need to be able to take it to the next level and make sure we succeed on our initiatives and opening the Recreation Aquatic Center in fall of twenty-twenty-three. With that, is there any other comments here from staff? I'm staff, I apologize, from council? If not, this is a resolution. Is there any action by council?
Through the mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution appropriating seventy-two thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars from the general fund to the Community Services Department Recreation Division to fund the deputy director and increase a recreation services coordinator.
Motion by Hamilton, seconded by Salazar. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Medina.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mason.
Aye.
Mayor Medina.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you for the detailed report and staff's answers to the questions. Thank you. Now we'll move on to our final item under conduct business, item E, please.
Item seven E, receive report and confirm appointment of city council members to city council subcommittees as liaisons to the city's citizen advisory commissions, boards and committees and as representatives and alternates to San Mateo County and other regional agencies. As you know, every year we do go through this around this time where we appoint council members to regional bodies for San Mateo County as well as any city, excuse me, any city bodies. And before you, and I apologize if it's not big, I can zoom in more, before you on the screen is a list of all, sorry, all of the county regional bodies that the city council serves on, as well as members of the public. For instance, San Mateo County Mosquito Abatement District, Robert Reichel, a citizen, has been on that for several years and his appointment runs through December of two thousand twenty-four. And likewise, city manager Jovan Grogan serves as the representative for the Coma Creek Flood Control District. We also have several ad hoc committees for the city that are on the screen here, I can zoom in a little bit. And we also have the C liaison assignments that the city council serves on.
So if we can, and we'll go first with the liaison assignments, we're gonna be bringing back policies and procedures, I believe at the next council meeting, the twenty-fifth. And so at this time, at least we can have that in place and whatever is deemed under that adoption, we can either, if it's going forward with continuing them or not, at least we have that prepared. And then whatever action is done by council of that policies and procedures, I think it's important that the community commissions and board to be updated as to the reason and what's happening on that. And we just, I allocated two out on the ad hoc committees. Next slide, thank you. And I'm going backwards. The, everything remained the same with the, what I did do is, usually it had been in the mayor and vice mayor on the city executive committee and with Mr. Hamilton being vice mayor next year, at least it would continue on that continuity and having somebody that's been here this year into next year so that there's some knowledge of what has transpired in those meetings. And the first, the county regional assignments, there are a couple that need to be added to the non-appointed, but those can be done later. It doesn't affect us. I did reach out to the city manager, he's willing to do the Coma Creek. In some cities, council members do that. In some cities, the mosquito abatement, council members have done that, but Robert Reichel has served us well and has, is continuing on with that. I think everything there had remained the same. There was just a, on the PCE, council member Salazar has a standing regional meeting already, so we need an alternate there. And sea level rise, it is required, so we need one there. What I would also ask, and I know it's not shown here, but it kind of says how many times it meets a year, right? So some bodies meet monthly, some six months a year, some four, four times a year, I'm sorry. And so I'd ask my colleagues if there's any corrections to what has been stated in the large document about when folks meet, if they could correct that so we could update. Councilmember Hamilton.
Sorry, I thought you were opening for a general comment. I have, I don't have an answer to the question you just asked.
Mayor Medina, I did want to add the packet, the agenda packet that is posted online and that the council members will receive, does have that full schedule and description of each of these bodies. This is just a condensed version, so it's easier to view.
And that's why the staff did this, because it's so much to be seen, but that was to expand it back then when I looked into where do they meet, what times do they meet, how often do they meet? So anybody who gets assigned to that or has the alternate, they can just look at that and say, oh, I'm going to twelve fifty San Carlos, San Carlos, that's where the meeting is, and it's at seven PM. But yes, Councilmember Hamilton.
So I was gonna volunteer to be the alternate for the sea level rise vulnerability assessment policy advisory committee.
Thank you.
And perhaps suggest that in return, Councilmember Medina be the, my alternate for airport land use, which is a barrel lapse.
The airport, let's see.
I thought it was, but that's okay.
The airport land use has been me because I know I get all the announcements and I voted in January.
Oh, I'm sorry, you know what, I was looking at twenty twenty-one, so you, I already, so no, I'm not looking to replace you, Mr. Mayor. You already know it's a barrel lapse.
Yes, sometimes a short meeting and sometimes not. Okay, so that just leaves the PCE, that we do need that and it's primarily not because the council member Salazar did remind me, he literally is in another meeting in another location when we go back to meeting in person. Councilmember Medina.
Yeah, we probably need to change the Clean San Bruno Action Committee to Downtown and Community Committee. And we don't have a personnel board anymore.
That'd be ad hocs, yes, thank you.
I can make those changes.
Right, and on the county regional assignments, the only ones, I submitted them and it's not a big deal if they're not there, but there's just a couple others, but they can be updated and then sent back. And then they're not appointed from our level, they're appointed at the selection committee with the whole county who did vote theirs. Any other? Councilmember Hamilton, I'm sorry.
I'm not finding it in the packet fast enough, so I'll just ask Councilmember Medina, what, does PCE, they need during the workday, correct?
No.
No, we need Thursday, early evening. Okay, I can volunteer to be the alternate for PCE.
Well, thank you, Mr. Hamilton, thank you very much, I appreciate it. I was gonna do that, but there is also a third meeting so many months that I'm on, so I couldn't be at that one either, or at least I'd have to skip some. But Councilmember Medina is there and actually is on the executive as well. Okay, I think we have had those taken care of. Any questions, comments, or are we all concurrence? And thank you for everybody making note of things that need to be modified. Thank you.
Wonderful.
Okay, I see everybody is good and that will be considered, that all five of us are in concurrence with what we see now for the year that we're in of twenty twenty-one. Okay, let's move on to, oh, I'm sorry, is there any public comment on that item in regards to those assignments by council members and mayor and vice mayor? Seeing none, we'll move on to council member, comments from council members. It got quiet. Vice Mayor Mason.
It's a kind of overdue, but I was looking at things that happened in the last year and I just wanted to make sure to thank the library. Councilmember Salazar and I had worked on the heart committee to have events planned for the United Against Hate Week, and I apologize this is so late, but the library did facilitate a reading from author Mahogany Brown and all of the schools in San Bruno were invited, both public and private. And it was really nice, both Councilwoman Salazar and I were asked to, or we volunteered and were asked to introduce the author. And it was actually a really nice reading and a nice group of students turned out to listen to it. So I wanted to make sure to thank both author Mahogany Brown, city manager Grogan, director Tim, we're at the library, and then all of the staff that just helped to facilitate that meeting. I also wanted to thank, just looking at the list tonight, you mentioned Mr. Reichel, and I did not know this and didn't know this until my own kids walked on a hive in San Bruno Park, which I shared with many people, but he immediately reached out to me to let me know that the San Mateo County Mosquito Abatement District actually would come out and initiated the process. And they came out right away and walked through our park to make sure that the hive had been, you know, moved, that there were no other hives around and it was within maybe a day or two days of, I actually had to send my, go to the emergency room with my kids. But I wanted to just make sure to thank him because that connection made sure that other kids in San Bruno Park weren't safe and other people didn't step on another hive. So, so thank you for being on that board and reaching out to me because he initiated the conversation. And then lastly, just letting everybody know that we do have two testing sites that opened on Monday for COVID. The rapid testing site, which is at eight forty-one San Mateo Avenue, that's open Monday through Friday. And then the COVID site that opened for PCR testing at San Bruno City Hall, also Monday through Friday. So those have both been filled. I was told yesterday that the opening of the eight forty-one site booked really quickly, they had like five hundred people within just a couple of minutes. The PCR testing I'm hearing is also being booked within minutes at San Bruno City Hall. So thank you to, everybody's been working on this, especially the county who's funding a lot of it, but hopefully our residents take advantage and we're able to somehow stop the surge. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'm noticing, and we ended with E and then we're on to council comments, but then I saw a hand go up. So I'm gonna call on in the audience, if I could, in case they didn't get their hand up fast enough for the appointments of council members.
Yeah.
Well, sorry, sorry, council, but I was actually hoping to comment on something you were currently talking about. My previous comments were going to be directed toward council member Salazar, he serves on a very important commission and that is related to the PCE, which I think can play a huge role in how we make a quick and efficient transition to a one hundred percent renewable energy San Bruno. And, but now that I'm talking now, I would just like to make a comment that PCR tests are very important right now.
I'm sorry, I apologize. That was on the last slide and right now we're on council comments. And so it's the council member's opportunity in which to say some of those things.
Sorry.
Sorry. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Medina, now, just for clarity, if there was a topic listed by a council member specifically, then of course that is open for the public to discuss, ask questions with those items. Councilmember Medina.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Wanted to talk about second harvest grocery distributions. There is one tomorrow at Skyline, that's every week from eleven to one PM. It is my understanding that they provide groceries for up to over eight hundred families. And right now there is a volunteer shortage. Earlier today, I was told they're seventeen volunteers short. And And, um, if anybody could make it, um, to, to give them a hand, I would show up there at ten forty-five. That's every Wednesday at Skyline. Um, there's also one at Bel Air on the fourth Wednesday of each month. Um, that's from two o'clock to a four o'clock. We had enough volunteers last time, uh, but, um, I think we're in good shape. But the Skyline, uh, is in need of volunteers, so if anybody can make it, that'd be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other comments from council? Seeing, seeing none, I just wanted to, and I, and we haven't been here, um, for a little bit, but I just wanted to acknowledge last year made the twenty-fifth year in San Bruno that the Catholic Charity House has done work. I was there, um, when we distributed, uh, meals for folks and they had clothes and, and other, just a lot of things that they've done, what people, and yes, they're out of St. Bruno's, but they are not affiliated with the Archers. They're not affiliated with St. Bruno's, but they do work, uh, collaboratively. And that has now made twenty-five years. So I think the volunteers gave a certificate and, um, as you, as folks know, on their Thanksgiving and Christmas, it comes from those that cook it, those that make it, those that bring it, those that supply it, and those young people and others that actually serve it. So it truly is a community, uh, effort, which is very appreciated, especially in these challenging times. With that, seeing no other, uh, comments from council, before we adjourn, I'm going to ask that we adjourn in honor and memory of three individuals. As you see before us, uh, we have in loving memory of J D, Dave and Bill. Unfortunately, as our year has begun, uh, it's with sad news that all three of these gentlemen ha- have passed. All three of these gentlemen had worked for the city in some capacity. Dave for twenty-three years, J D for twelve years. And I'm told Bill, um, who worked at the senior center, um, worked for a couple of decades. And so it is sad that we have lost over the last couple of months, um, these three gentlemen. And we want to offer all of our heartfelt sympathies to the family. I ask that we keep, uh, all of them, their loved ones, in our prayers and our thoughts. And we want to thank them for all of their dedication, their spirit, their pride, for the work of the, the job they did and serving of this community and to its residents. So with that, I ask that we will adjourn and have a moment of silence in honor of these fine gentlemen. And thank you. And I also want, on behalf of the council and myself, I want the staff to know that we think of you and, and keep you in our thoughts as well. Uh, for, uh, losing coworkers is not easy. And it's nothing that, uh, we take lightly and we want to, uh, acknowledge you and appreciate the work that you do as well. With that, we will adjourn to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held in January the twenty-fifth, twenty-two at seven P M. Meeting adjourned and thank you staff and thank you colleagues.
Thank you, everyone.